For open for public hearing and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under Administrative Items Number 10 are open for public comments and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Item 7 is your opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach your lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above and directly in front of you will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 14 is the public comment forum. It will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach your lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action calculated to disrupt such meeting, or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. LaMagno, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. We will now have the invocation led by Commissioner Reed, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner May. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Praise God from whom all blessings flow. Praise Him all creatures here below. Lord, we praise you and we thank you and we give you honor and we thank you for this day. We thank you for a city called Daytona Beach. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. We thank you for the citizens that we represent and for those who come to our city to visit, and that our doors will always be open and opportunities will continue to be abounding. Now, as we meet together this evening, we pray that we would be in unity, that we would understand what's before us, and that we would make the decisions that are best for the people that we serve. I give you all the glory in the matchless name of Jesus, I pray. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its strong.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the December 12, 2018 Special City Commission on Panhandling, the January 16, 2019 Special City Commission Meeting on Panhandling, the January 23, 2019 Strategic Planning Workshop kickoff, and the January 23, 2019 Business Meeting of the City Commission. Second?
Take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Trager. Do we have any questions or comments regarding these minutes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. We'll now move on to our agenda approval.
Actually, we're going to move on to item... Oops, sorry. I'm jumping ahead.
That's okay.
Pardon me.
Sorry. We'll move on to agenda approval. If there are any changes to our agenda, our city manager will address them at this time.
There are no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Gilliland. We'll take a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, now, moving on to item number six, which is our presentation. Tonight, we have a presentation from Halifax Health on the opioid crisis. Dr. Ed Privet, Halifax Health, will be updating the commission on the opioid crisis in Volusia County.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the commission for allowing me just two minutes to discuss an important topic for our community, one that has a big impact on our community, and that's the current opioid crisis. I do have a microphone presentation which I believe is... We're pulling up, and there it is.
Excuse me. Can he check his mic?
Can everybody hear me?
No.
No.
I think he's just got to talk into it.
Do I need to be closer? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? No.
Looks green, too.
Excuse us for one second.
Better? Okay. Here we go. Good. Excellent. So, again, I'd like to thank the commission for giving me... allowing me just a couple of minutes to discuss this important topic that affects our community quite dramatically and has the opioid crisis in our country. So, just briefly, to frame the discussion, if you look at the statistics nationally for 2016, there were 42,000 deaths from opioid overdose in the United States. That's the equivalent of 116 deaths per day, every day, in the United States from opioid-related overdose. And it was estimated in 2016 that over 2 million people had an opioid use disorder. So, this led President Trump in 2017 to declare the opioid crisis a national emergency in the United States. Now, looking a little bit closer to home, these statistics are right here from Volusia County, and we see that in 2016, there were 110 overdose-related deaths in Volusia County. And in 2017, that went up to about 150 opioid-drug-induced deaths in Volusia County. This slide indicates the number of Narcan deployments in Volusia County in 2017. Narcan is a medication that reverses the effects of the opioid. So, this is given by emergency personnel, either emergency medical personnel or law enforcement personnel, when they find a patient that is down and unconscious for some reason. The Narcan is deployed if the person is thought to have had an opioid overdose as a cause of their lack of consciousness. So, in 2017, there were more than 600 deployments of Narcan, which reverses the effects of the opioid and basically saves the patient's life, so they're able to wake up and start breathing again, basically. These statistics are drug-induced deaths by age group, and you'll notice that certainly in 2017, which is the gold bar, the most effective age group was the 25 to 44 age group. So, relatively young population that this problem affects. So, the question is, where do we go from here? As a response to the opioid epidemic, the Center for Disease Control recently released new guidelines for physicians for how to appropriately prescribe opioids. The FDA is performing a regulatory overhaul. And importantly, for our healthcare institutions, the Joint Commission has developed new standards to help guide physicians to assess patients that have pain and appropriately prescribe pain medication. This is just a report from the Joint Commission, but what it means for hospitals is that the assessment and management of pain must be a priority, an organizational priority, for the hospital. And physicians, as leaders of the hospital, must take a leadership role in developing the organizational response to this crisis, and Halifax has certainly done that. So, I wanted to just share with you a little bit about how Halifax has responded to all of this and our efforts to try to address this issue in our community. So, the way that we've addressed it is we formed a multidisciplinary committee. The committee consists of several physicians, but also of representatives from our nursing staff, pharmacy, a research expert, our patient safety experts, and also our quality improvement experts. So, a large group of people in a multidisciplinary fashion addressing this issue and what we can do to try to reduce the number of opioid events in Volusia County. And the way that we've gone about it is that we have searched the literature, basically, for best practices and for practice guidelines so that we can educate our healthcare providers as far as innovative ways to evaluate patients for pain and to prescribe pain, and sometimes to wean patients off of opioids if that's felt to be the appropriate course of action. We have different guidelines for different settings, guidelines that we've established as best practices for inpatients and other guidelines for our emergency room visitors, as well as acute versus chronic pain that we might see in our ambulatory care environment. We've developed standardized tools to help physicians assess the patient's pain, focusing a little bit more on whatever functional impairment the pain might be causing rather than the patient's subjective report of their pain level. We've standardized these tools in our electronic health record. We've also developed pocket-sized guidelines that physicians can carry with them, or apps that physicians can use on their phone to help with appropriate prescribing of opioids, as well as appropriate tapering of patients off of opioids if possible. We have developed educational opportunities for the physicians, both online and live educational opportunities. And we have developed tools to help physicians identify patients that are at higher risk for either misuse or diversion of the opioids, so that we will be more aware of the risk when deciding what type of pain medication we might want to prescribe for a patient. And we have facilitated the use of something called eForce. EForce is an electronic database which will let a physician know, when we check it, that we can look up a patient's name on the database, and it will let us know if that patient has received prescriptions from pharmacies for opioids from another physician. So, this will help us identify patients that may be doing what we call doctor shopping or going around from physician to physician, trying to basically trick a physician into giving them a prescription for a medication that they already have filled a prescription for. So, that's called eForce in Florida. It's a prescription drug monitoring database. We've embedded it into our electronic health record at Halifax, so that right through the patient's chart, with one click, the physician can easily check this database and determine whether that patient has had an issue with filling multiple prescriptions for opioids. So, when you put all of this together, this is our ongoing effort and what we're trying to do to address pain management and hopefully reduce the number of opioids prescribed for patients in our hospital. And these are just some of the best practices. I've already really been through these, but a big one is checking eForce, you know, assessing the patient's risk for dependence or diversion, and regular monitoring of how effective our treatment is. And then for our outcome measures, what we're looking at is looking at how frequently physicians take advantage of the educational opportunities that we've been able to develop, tracking any adverse events that may occur as a result of opioid prescribing, and also tracking the number of overall opioid prescriptions written for our patients, as well as the number of pills per prescription, in an effort to reduce the number of pills that may be out there in the community that have not been used or weren't needed and are hanging around in someone's medicine cabinet that then could be misused at a later date. And then monitoring individual physicians prescribing patterns and practices. And this, these are... This is a preliminary report of our results from all of our efforts. This is the first six months of 2017... Excuse me. The first six months of 2018 compared to the first six months of 2017. So, for the first six months of 2018, our... The number of pills written per opioid prescription or pills written for patients discharged from the inpatient setting, the number of opioid pills written per patient discharged from the inpatient setting was down by 12.5 percent, and the number of opioid pills prescribed to patients as they were discharged from the emergency department was down by 28.5 percent. So, we've been successful at decreasing the number of pills prescribed to patients, hopefully decreasing the number of opioid pills that are then out there in the community that may not have been used by those patients and continue to hang around and then could be available for misuse by others. We'll continue to monitor this. We'll continue to track this and develop additional tools for physicians to use to address this issue. And that's really basically it. I just wanted to give a little bit of information about what we at Halifax are trying to do to address this important issue in our community, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
I have a question. I have a question. About three slides, and you went through the numbers of how many, I guess that was Narcan on you used?
Narcan, yes.
Narcan. So, I'm looking at, it was 120 in the 32114 area code. And is that a direct correlation with the new study that says that 32114 area code is the least healthy area code?
I think there's... Definitely would be a correlation there. It would be where the most patients have been found unconscious, basically, by either law enforcement personnel or emergency medical personnel, and felt that that may have been from an opioid overdose and then deployed the Narcan.
So, if we attack the 32114 area code, it seemed to me that that would really help and bring numbers down. What are some ways that we, as a city, could help in that 32114 area code is in this area, in this city? What are some ways that we, as a city, could partner with you all to... Because I'm gravely concerned about that. What are some ways that we in the city can partner with Halifax to deter that or to decrease those numbers?
Well, that's a great question. We're looking, you know, it's going to take, obviously, a lot more than just our efforts at Halifax to address this issue. It's a community-wide issue. We are partnering with Stuart Marchman. Stuart Marchman does have a treatment facility for opioid use disorder for something called MAT, Medical Assisted Treatment. And the Medical Assisted Treatment has been shown to decrease the number of patients that end up overdosing from opioids. The problem is that resources are limited, and there's a waiting list for the Stuart Marchman facility for those types of treatments. There are some independent physicians, some private physicians in the community that offer some of the Medical Assisted Treatment. I think that, you know, what we need to probably focus on is identifying those people in our community that do have addiction issues or opioid, what's now called opioid use disorder, and trying to get those patients into treatment for their disorder. There are some effective treatments out there, so identifying those people and getting them into treatment, that's the important part. So, I don't know. Whatever the city can do to kind of help us identify and target those patients toward the proper treatment would be helpful.
So, with Stuart Marchman being full, and we have limited amount of private physicians, I would think even with those private physicians, they would probably be physicians that would require health insurance and more HMO and not for, probably, the people that we would need to target anyways.
That's true. It does require some additional training on the part of the physician to be licensed to provide this type of treatment. And some of them, you know, a lot of patients do have difficulty with insurance coverage for the treatment, so there's an out-of-pocket expense on the part of the patient to obtain the treatment.
Okay. So, you said 120, and there were only like 607, 20, right? So, more than 15% of them for the entire county?
Yeah, let me try to...
15%? This is a crisis in this area.
Which is what I'm saying, it's a crisis.
That's a real crisis.
I think it was the third slide in.
Yeah.
Next one, right here.
I think this is the one you're referring to.
So, 32114 is first. So, you're at 120 for the 32114 area code, and there were only 620.
And how many were in 32117? Can you see that?
62.
That's the third one. So, that was about...
65, about.
65, 63.
Almost 100, okay.
But there was many in 32114, almost as combined 32117 and 32174. So, Daytona, Center of Daytona, had almost the same amount as Ormond Beach and Holly Hill combined.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. Hello, over here.
Yes.
We understand it's a crisis. Any idea what it's related to? Is it pain? Is it lifestyle? Is it systemic? Is it unemployment-causing depression? Is it anxiety? Is it, I had a back injury, and now I'm in pain? What... Do we have any ideas there? Number one. Number two, men or women? There is 25 to 44 years of age, and do you have numbers on whether it's men or women? How it's broken down?
I'll answer the second question first. The numbers that I... I don't think I have numbers here with me, but the numbers that I've seen, it is slightly more in men than women, but it's not dramatically more. But it's... There is a little bit more of an effect affecting men more than women, but it does affect women significantly. So, what is causing it? That's such a great question. You know, it's multifactorial, actually. In the United States, we use about 80% of the world's opioids in the United States. So, it is something that is a problem here in our country and not necessarily a problem in some of the other countries. Back in about the late 90s, there was a big push by, actually, the Joint Commission to declare pain as the fifth vital sign. So, there was a group that felt that we, as physicians, were not addressing pain as well as we should. And so, there was a push for us to address pain more effectively, and the Joint Commission actually began to require physicians to ask every single patient that we see about their pain level, and then if the patient reports pain, to do something about that pain. At about the same time, there were some new opioids on the market that came to market, and they were initially sort of marketed as not having as much addiction potential as other opioids. But we learned from experience that that was not the case. And actually, there are some lawsuits, particularly in Massachusetts now, there's a lawsuit against some of the pharmaceutical industry regarding their promotional practices of these opioids back in about the late 90s and early 2000s. So, all of that happened, and physicians began treating pain very...
So, you're saying that you're thinking, possibly, that it's our residents are actually in physical pain, that they're actually physically hurt?
Yes. I think a lot of people are in pain. Now, please be aware that there are patients that need these medications, that really can only function with these medications. That's why we're trying to change our evaluation of the patient from a subjective report of how much pain they're in to evaluating how well a patient can function. And if we prescribe these medications for them, it's important for us to document that their function actually improves and how their function improves. So, there are patients who need these medications to function better, but we need to focus on function. But you alluded to something else that's also a part of the issue, and that's some of the social determinants, some of the anxiety that we have seen as related to social issues, patients who have socioeconomic stress, you know, that all plays a role. So, there are some things from a society standpoint that I think we need to look at as far as helping to alleviate stress and anxiety from some of the social disparities that we see.
And so, those are some of the research factors. I'd be interested in what can we do as a city, things that are in our purview that we could help with? That would be interesting.
Yeah, that will be very interesting. I think that, you know, Halifax, we could kind of partner with the city to start looking at some of those things here in Daytona and try to determine maybe what we could do about them.
So, Mr. Mayor, going forward, I really believe that this is a crisis, and I believe that as we go forward and look to see what we can do in future planning for that 32114 area code, I hope that we... This is something that we will take and put in mind as one of the issues that we would like to try and tackle going forward to see how we can make that area code healthier. That's what I'd like to see.
All right. I concur with that. And do you have any other questions or comments?
No, just that we would be happy to work with you to explore some of those opportunities as a healthcare facility.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think that was very enlightening and informative.
Yeah. Thank you.
Actually, sir, if you want to leave that with the assistant city clerk?
That it doesn't end here? Is there a board?
Does he have a board?
Yeah, is there something?
What are you asking? Is there a board to address this issue now? Is there some sort...
No, not so much that us discuss it now, but is there a board or something where the conversation continues?
Well, I think for us, a part of the conversation continues when we plan our workshop on this issue to do a... Part of the workshop, and I've reached out to the Health Department, to do the workshop where they come in and have us to simulate...
The workshop.
The conditions of their... Of the people who are experiencing health challenges.
And we'll pick it up.
And then we'll move forward as of... After they do that part, we'll have a workshop to then see how we can partner with them. And I think it would be helpful if we... You all would come to the table with us for that workshop.
We'd be happy to.
Okay. So, we'll definitely include you in there. Thank you again.
Okay. Moving on to item number seven, which is citizens' comments. This is the public comments by people addressing the City Commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item on the consent agenda. My one and only speaker is Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Candy Avenue.
Use the other mic. You can move it closer if you can.
John Nicholson, 413 North Candy Avenue. You'll notice on the consent agenda, most of them are public works. I went to public works. The previous group that we had was not too good. They changed them. Vertigo is pretty good, but I have a problem with their landscaping. When we redid A1A, it's mostly grass. It's very noticeable when there's trash in it or palm fronds or weeds. They've been pretty good about the palm fronds. They take them right up. The garbage is collected, but the weeds, when you walk down that, it is just really out of sorts. So, I'm asking you, when you do it, if it's a problem when you redo Vertigo, that you specifically mention the weeds, because we have so much grass in front of the Hilton at Breakers Park along A1A, that they have something in it that they spray the weeds, because you can't... There's something... Nothing worse than seeing that carpet of grass, and then the weeds pop up, you know, two or three or four inches high. So, I'm asking that that be addressed. And then, secondly, with that, do we have enough public works? I know we were cutting way, way back, but do we have enough police? I know that there was a comment made about that. Do we have enough fire and all of that? Do you want to address our staffing? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My only speaker for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland. We have a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have any questions or comments concerning the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine, which are public hearings. Item number nine A is Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Preserve at LPGA Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use element Neighborhood 5 to increase the density from one unit per gross acre to two units per gross acre, with a maximum density of four units per net acres of, I believe it's 13-plus or minus acre parcel generally located on the west side of LPJ Boulevard between International Tennis Drive and International Speedway Boulevard, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. At the request of the applicant, this item is to be continued to the March 6, 2019 City Commission meeting.
Motion to move this to March 6 at the request of the applicant.
Second.
Let me take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Henry. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine B. It's Development Administrative Services Planning Division, rezoning planned development gen... Division Rezoning Plan Development Ju- Plan Development General Preserve at LPGA, it's LPGA, rezoning Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 130 plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of LPGA Boulevard and south of Father Lopez High School from Volusia County zoning to PDG Plan Development General District, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Preserve at LPGA Plan District Agreement with Consolidated Tamoka Land Company and Alsop Companies LLC to allow for 150, 158 lot single-family subdivision, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing effective date. At the request of the applicant, this item is to be continued to the March 6, 2019 City Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, uh, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion two carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine C. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Tiki Supreme rezoning to Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 12.4 plus or minus acres of property located at 2401 Mason Avenue from PDG Plan Development General expired Tiki Supreme Plan District Agreement to PDG Plan Development General, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Tiki Supreme Plan District Agreement with Tiki Supreme Inc. to allow for the development of a 102,907 plus or minus square foot industrial development, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger. We'll take a second. I believe it was Commissioner Delgado. Uh, all those, uh...
I do have, um, Mr. Joe Hopkins here, if there's any questions. And I don't have any other speakers signed up.
Mr. Do we have any questions for Mr. Hopkins? Okay. Uh, no other comments from the public. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine D. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Orthopedic Surgery Center Second Amendment to the Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 4.1 plus or minus acres of property located at 1871 LPGA Boulevard from M4 Industrial Park to PDG Plan Development General District, modifying the Orthopedic Surgery Center Plan District Agreement to incorporate the 4.1 plus or minus acres of property, increasing the plan development up to a total of 7.1 plus or minus acres, and allowing the construction of an additional 40,000 square foot Medical General Office Building, expanding the total allowable medical, medical general office to 57,000 square feet, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment to the Orthopedic Surgery Center Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Um...
I have Mr. Mark.
Mr. Dowse here. All right.
On behalf of the applicant for any questions, and I have no other speakers for this item.
Okay, there are no other speakers. Uh, no questions for Mr. Dowse? All right. Um, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. This motion two carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine E. It's the Development and Administrative Services Economic Community Development. Amend the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Membership Requirements to Comply with Changes in Florida Statute Section 421, 420.9076. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the ordinance number 9337, establishing the Local Housing Assistance Program as previously amended by ordinances number 96259 and 08112 to comply with changes in Section 420.9076 of the Florida statutes, revising committee membership requirements and providing when this ordinance shall take effect.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any speakers on this item or any?
I have one speaker on this item. He just put his first name, which is Chad. Do you want to come up and speak? And can you say your, when you get to the podium, can you give me your, uh, full name and address, please?
This might be this one.
The handheld one, nope. The other one.
Oh, sorry. Uh, my name is Chad Galvin. And, uh, what else is your name? Uh, 518 Blake Road, South Daytona.
Okay.
And, uh, first and foremost, I'm, I'm, I'm very, uh, glad that y'all quoted the Bible to begin this, 'cause if y'all believe in the Bible, then you'll believe in that the reason why the black community is the way it is, is because we are the true children of Israel. We are not the curses of Deuteronomy 28. We went through slavery.
Excuse me, hold it.
And we are, we oppose the laws of God. And that's why we're under this condition.
Hold it. Your, your time. Hold it. Your time is up. You gotta listen to me if I'm asking you. You have to speak on the item that's on the agenda. The item that he's speaking on is not on the agenda. Please e- exit the room if you're gonna continue to talk.
I have no other speakers for this item.
Okay. We'll wait till they get him taken care of.
I have no other speakers, Mr. Mayor.
No other speakers?
Uh, can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wondering why you made the modification, because I'm new on the commission. I'm just wondering why you made the modification or needed the new ordinance?
To concur with state?
I don't know why.
We were reconstituting this board, and in order to do so, we had to update our regulations to be consistent with state law.
Okay.
As to the makeup and consistency of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Okay, moving on to item number nine F. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code Text Amendment. Amend Article 5, an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the principal use table in Section 5.2.8.2 of the Land Development Code to add restaurants with drive-through services of permitted use in the T5 tourist highway interchange zoning district, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I have no speakers for this item.
All right, no speakers. All those, uh, in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Okay, moving on to item number nine G. It's the Development and Administrative Services 500 East Apartments Transportation Improvements Cost Allocation Agreement and Proportionate Fair Share Contribution Approval. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the 500 East Apartments Transportation Improvements Cost Allocation Agreement with Rhodey Daytona LLC and the County of Volusia, providing for the proportionate fair share contribution by Rhodey Daytona LLC related to the transportation facility concurrency for the 500 East Apartments Development located on LPGA Boulevard and east of Clyde Morris Boulevard at 1851 LPGA Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
I do have Ms. Jessica Groh here for questions, and then I do have one additional speaker, uh, Mr. Johnny Moore.
All right, um, do we have any questions from the commission of either, uh, staff or, okay, Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore? Johnny Moore? Okay.
Good afternoon. Uh, my question relates to the, I guess, thought pattern in terms of doing the allocation of the 500, uh, places at that location. Been sitting here in Daytona Beach. I've seen, I'm a, I'm a born and raised here. And I've seen so many businesses, uh, and other services move outside of Central Daytona Beach, uh, outskirts. But that's not my concern. My concern is that having 500 new apartments or new dwellings there, which of course is multiplied by the number of people in there, which means there's going to be a larger impact on the water base or so many of the other services that the city provides. Uh, I would understand that we are currently looking at concerns regarding our water table, regarding the quality of the water and so on, just within the city of Daytona Beach. Has the commission and the city have, we really looked at the impact that might have on the existing citizens of Daytona Beach. I do understand the importance of having housing, but I do also understand the importance of having ownership, that while we are looking at terms of having businesses come in, getting half a million dollars coming in to the county or the city, what about the overall impact to the citizens? If we have a better program whereby I'm able to buy a home instead of renting a place, then my life and the lives of my children and my grandchildren are improved. And therefore, I think that we should really look at this before voting on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other speakers on this item.
Excuse me, yes, ma'am. Do you, are you representing the applicant, right?
Are you Jessica? Okay.
Um, Jessica Gal, Cobb Pole 149 South Bridwood Avenue. Um, thank you for your comment. I just wanted to state for the record just that the rezoning for this project has already been approved, um, where we worked the city staff to go through the utility demands and the effect on water and sewer calculations. Um, what is before the board tonight is just to improve the amount of the proportionate fair share for traffic improvements. So, thank you.
You want to explain what proportionate fair share means? What that, what that means?
Absolutely. Um, so as part of each development, there are certain improvements that need to be made for the roadways around the development as the city continues to grow and expand. And the applicant is just approving the amount of the proportionate fair share that the city and county have come together with the applicant to figure out what the cost of the improvements allocated to our project will be.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. There'll be no further questions from staff or, or from commission. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine I. It's the Engineering Public Works Department Latitudes Phase 3B Preliminary and Final Plat Approval. This is a resolution quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for Latitude of Daytona Beach, Phase 3B on 206.882 plus or minus acres of land for development of a residential subdivision located on the north side of LPGA Boulevard and west of Timber Creek Road South, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the contract for plat recording, authorizing the city manager to, to sign the final plat and permit recordation thereupon, meeting certain conditions proceeding and providing effective date.
So moved. Second.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
No speakers and, uh, no questions. Uh, all those in favor, uh, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Moving on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10 A is the City Manager's Office Affordable Housing Advisory Board Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing 11 members to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for two-year terms, expiring February 17, 2021, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to present.
Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint 11 members to the Affordable Housing Committee. The membership terms of Larry McDernitt, Ann Yorden, Jeff Hurt, Patricia Lagone, Kim Moten, and Norma Lewis have expired, and all would like to continue to serve. We have five additional positions for which we have five applicants. Afonse Bush Jr., Belinda Haines, Turner Heim, Suzanne Odini, and Sandra Alexander. Therefore, we have 11 applicants to fill 11 positions.
And to be clear for the commission, uh, the, the ordinance, as we've just approved to reconstitute the, the board, requires that you appoint eight, between eight and 11 members. So there's no requirement that you appoint all 11.
Okay. And, and this is an item that, uh, I was discussing when I was talking about the whole affordable housing issue. So this helps to bring us to having a functioning board. And hopefully, this board will start to meet and be allowed to, uh, make some recommendations to us as to things that they think should be taking place. But that's just a interjection that I wanted to make. Um, any other, any comments or any questions about any of the applicants?
Do we believe that the 11 is, is necessary or functioning? What, what's the minimum?
Eight.
Eight? That's just three more.
Are these, are these mayoral recommendations or they?
They are commission.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, that we appoint the 11 individuals you just named.
Second.
Yeah, okay.
There, there's a requirement that they consist of certain categories of people. Do we have, and I couldn't tell in the supporting documentation, maybe I misread it. Do all those, do we have all that meshed up where we have someone who qualifies or counts?
We do.
Okay, and is that, did we take all 11?
Yes. In fact, uh, we really only need six with the technical qualifications, and nine of the people have those technical qualifications.
Was it identified who was what or?
Yes, it's on, um, in the supporting documentation, the letter to me from Don Goodie.
It's a table.
All right, okay.
It's a table down to.
So as long as we're good on that, then all right, that's a little question. Thank you. I'm sorry to process that.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion. We didn't get a second.
I will. Second. Either one's fine.
Okay, I heard, heard. Uh, recognized Commissioner Reed and, as the second in the motion by Commissioner Gilliland. Uh, we'll take public comment unless we have other questions.
I have no public speakers.
No public speakers. Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second. If there are no further questions or comments from the commission, we'll take a vote. All those who are in favor, uh, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Moving on to item number 11. It's a discussion item. Item number 11 A is Annual Performance Review of the City Manager, James V. Chisholm.
So what do I need to do? We, uh, endeavored over some time, and I apologize for the length, to compile, uh, this report, which was aggregated from the participants that you can see on the chart. I don't know if there's available as a PowerPoint. Commissioner May, not having been elected at the time, her comments don't appear here. Um, I suppose we'll have to do one in the next cycle, so another five years.
Who would do that?
I'm kidding. I apologize. Um, I, I don't know. I mean, it pretty much speaks for itself. Uh, the, everyone rated things between one to five. They were divided by the total number of categories to produce an average score at the bottom. The total average score was 3.5 out of possible five. Um, there was a summary made of kind of things that the manager does that they would like this, that the commission would like to see continue and things that they would like to modify. Uh, it's two pages long. I invite, I invite the public to read it if they're interested. Um, there was a question about, uh, I think in general, there was questions about accessibility, uh, clarity, and kind of, um, a feeling that maybe the commissioners were not as, uh, informed by the manager in certain items.
It's a day at the beach. That usually means a good time, fun, and relaxation in the surf and on the sand. But that hasn't always been the mood on Daytona's beach. During the early days of World War II, a day at the beach meant a firsthand look at the war. In early 1942, the war came to the shore.
No real criticism as far as your willingness to meet with people or meet with commissioners and go over things with them. It just seemed like there was probably a concern about, uh, insufficient information making it to the commissioners ahead of time. Other than that, I mean, it speaks for itself. I don't know what else we're supposed to really go over.
Um, well, if there's any additional comments that the commission would like to make that they may not have made to the manager or, uh, in their own, uh, private way, or if they want to make them in public, you're free to do that at this time. Um, no, okay.
Well, there seems to be, um, a consistency in regards to, um, being told about staff. I know one of my comments was about staff, about being told when upper management is going to change or someone's being released, that we're not, that information isn't shared with us. And I see that a couple of times here, that we need to be shared, that needs to be shared with us. And there was also a couple of times I've identified where, um, information, we need to be told about things. For example, when you ask for something, that we don't hear about it. You've got to ask for it again. And, and I don't, I don't like repeating myself. So I see here a couple of times, it's indicating that, for example, I would like more follow-up on older items so they don't lose priority. That's not my comment, but that's someone else's, which falls in line with what I'm saying, um, that I'm identifying. saying, that I'm identifying. And better follow-through on items mentioned during commission comments. So, those are a couple of things I see here. Couple of things about regarding staffing, the one in regards to the change of staffing and how staff is treated, as well as how staff treats the public, how they handle customers. And then there's an especial in the Water Department comment here. The one thing that's not identified this go-around is who said what. I would have liked to have seen who said what. So perhaps the next time we do this, whomever's responsible can tell us who said what. Because if we wanted to say something to them, I wouldn't know who to address.
I agree with that. I think I'd like my comments flushed out, so that, you know, it's noted, it's kind of public record, so I don't mind if mine are out in the open as to what I said.
I think you know the MLK laws of mine.
Yeah, yeah, you voted against it, we know. We recall. I would also say that I think it would be appropriate to maintain some consistency of reporting. There was a time when you would give us certain reports here, you know, most of the things that you gave, I was already apprised of personally, but they were things that was a list of what was going on, what projects, what the city was doing. And then you would do that and then you fall off. So I think you should add that to a list to be a consistent thing, even if it's not every meeting, if it's every three meetings, it needs to be consistently communicated, not just for us. Part of the meetings here are so that the public has a certain amount of information also that may be appropriate for them to hear. So, because I don't, you know, my remarks are not that I feel uninformed about what's going on, but I do believe that it is appropriate as the manager of the city that you give a report of, and even of projects. And one of the things that I think that we might even as a commission want to do is, as we are going through things and the consent agenda is an appropriate thing to have, but there are things that take place on the consent agenda that the public isn't aware of, because they are on the consent agenda, we have no discussion, it's not read really into the record. Two great things are on the item tonight, which I'll discuss in my comments, but these are things that are happening and sometimes people are confused about city government or what we're doing, because we don't give them enough information. So, I'll make my other comments later as it relates to something else.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Just as a response, certainly will endeavor to do a better job at both communicating and providing additional information. And as all of you know, that you get a weekly report from us on the various projects throughout the city. And I think what I took from that is you would like for me to also do that at our meetings with the public as those, and we can certainly do that, it's easy to accomplish. But we do take these seriously and will, and I will do my best to try to do a better job of providing the information you need in a timely fashion and address the issues you've identified here.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor, if I could add to that. My concern also was the turnover of the higher ranking people in high positions and not knowing about those. I just would like to know, I would like to know more as far as why they're being, are they being phased out? Are they being phased out and saving money? And it's just kind of, even as past, as I've been on the commission these past two and a half years, really two years, it just was a lot of turnover with department heads. And one day they'd be here and I'd call the next day and they would just be gone and I just like, I think when you have departments and you turn over department head, that's hard for a whole office to deal with. So, we want to maintain some continuity so that we know ahead of time that we're not off guard. And then when people call me and ask me, you know, or residents call, then I like to know something so that I can give, you know, a fair assessment of what's going on when we have department heads just leaving, jobs just being turned over. I'd like to know more about that. That was one of my concerns. But I'm positive, I do believe that the city is moving in a positive direction growth-wise. I'm very, I'm very happy with the growth of the city, but I would like to see more when, and the other thing is when leisure services budget has been cut, two years straight it's gone down since the two years. I'd like to know, and then positions are being cut. So they're having major positions being cut, but then also the funding is going down. So I'd like to, I'd like for us to know where that additional money is being put as far as those high-ranking employees that have been terminated and then the funding going down. That was a major concern of mine for two years that leisure services budget went down.
If I may add something to that in regards to the staffing, you know, any of us could not be sitting up here. And one of the things that really, and I know this is a right-to-work state, but when a person is just written out of the budget and not told that they're not going to be employed, that's, and they've got, you know, I don't even care if they're close to retirement, it's just, to me, it's just not, it's not fair, it's not polite, it's not respectful. And I think that we just need to be conscientious of how we let employees go. And I understand the commission manager-run means of government, that the manager and the attorney report to us and the staff reports to the manager, but I still think that management needs to be accountable to us on how they manage. And I think that we just need to be fair in how we treat these employees, because the employees are the first people that our citizens see. And if they're not happy, then the citizens aren't happy, and then they're mad at us. So we all have a responsibility to how we treat them. So I just want to be conscientious of that, because I know that's happened a couple of times and there's nothing we can do because if we don't do it collectively, then you can't act as one, because it's a commission manager situation. So, just need to be mindful of that.
Commissioner Gilliland?
To illustrate that, you know, actually, we had a discussion earlier today with the Brown Riverfront Park. And, you know, I have received a message from one of the folks that's on the DDA and I, you know, about supporting the park, and I said, you know, there's a large obligation, financial obligation for this, you know, what are the odds that the DDA might be able to make some sort of contribution? And the response I got back was Jason Jeffries was written out of the budget and he was doing a lot of support work for us, so now we have to hire somebody to do that. So, we're already in a jam financially. And they had found out through Jason. You know, Jason showed up to say that he would, you know, that he would no longer be able to support them. Now, what it sounds like is we had city staff supporting the DDA that should not have been happening in the first place, which is a problem. But in this case, you know, there are, this is the kind of downstream consequences, I mean, aside from the fact that, I mean, I won't say I didn't feel like I looked foolish in the whole thing, not knowing that Jason wasn't going to be here, but it was certainly, that's how I learned about the fact that that position had been eliminated, you know, through one of the other, you know, city boards that it had, you know, that that person was no longer there to support that board. So, certainly the turnover of communicating that, and I, you know, I can't tell you how many people I told you, I told to reach out to Emery before, you know, and they're like, he's not there anymore. I mean, I actually did feel kind of stupid on that one. So, you know, that is one of the places where, you know, we can't be affected in our positions if we're trying to recommend that someone speak with a particular city staffer and then we find out that that person is no longer here.
All right, well said, so noted. Okay. All right, thank you for the report. Commissioner Delgado, appreciate you. And we'll move on to commission comments. This time, we'll commence with Commissioner May, Zone Three.
Okay, so, where to begin? So I am the newest commissioner, I'm the commission, and I will tell you that I haven't been here for maybe three months, all right? I keep a running record of all the things that I've requested from the city. I keep a running record of everything that's sent to me via email. I get a weekly update from Ms. Betty Goodman over there, and I get a weekly update from the city manager, from Mr. Jaggar, Chief Capri. I've had this follow-up every single week since I've started, so whatever has gone on, whatever was communicated, it was, I think, taken and been used in our favor in my zone, where things that I asked for, I get information on very quickly. So for that, thank you, and thank you to everybody else for bringing it to their attention, because it's really helped me as a new person here, it's been very effective for me. Today, we had a meeting with the downtown Riverfront area. What caught my interest was that they want to have an area called Bethune Plaza, which will intersect with Mary McLeod Bethune, correct, or Second Avenue. And my question becomes, if that's going to be an intersecting point for the park, do we have a plan or could we start thinking about how we're going to make Second, Mary McLeod Bethune work more efficiently, look better, be attractive, because that seems to be an entry point to the park? It's going to start at Nova, and when people see Bethune Plaza, their interest will be perked toward that particular area, right? So, interest perked or peaked, concept is the same, right? So, what I would like to know is could we possibly start to think about what we can do in that area as we support the park? It will become important to us as an entry point. For tonight, I think that's about it. That was the biggest thing that kind of caught my eye. I like the fact that we keep bringing up events that we'd like to have workshops on, but I would love some dates, so I can plan ahead a little bit. That would be great. All right? So, thank you.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Let's see, out of my Bike Week funds, I might like make donation to Turi T. Small for the author that they're having come in. So there's a very detailed thing here about how much it will cost per hour and how many students they want to transport, but do we know how much this is going to cost in total? Like, I tell you what, let me donate two hundred and fifty dollars towards this, and then if we could get some reporting back from Turi T. about how much they're short for the transportation, you know, this seems like it would be a great way to highlight one of our Daytona Beach-based schools.
Okay. Would you like for me to get that? Because I have my check.
Well, would you like what?
For me to get that information. Turi T. Small, when I mentioned the author is coming and they want to bring the kids from other inner-city schools to come and hear the author speak and read to the children.
I saw.
You going to give some money too? Thank you very much. This is for the cost of the bus drivers, the hourly cost of the bus drivers, as well as the expenditures for bringing the author here, and they may or may not be feeding the children as well. And that was from West Side, from to Turi T. to, I had to name all the elementary schools.
Yeah, Palm Terrace, West Side, Holly Hill, Champion, and South Daytona. And the total number of students is five hundred and fifty. So, I just want to make sure that all those kids have an opportunity to participate.
Very good.
Those are all Title I schools and they all have ninety-plus percent poverty rate in the school. So, and they all feed from Daytona Beach, including Holly Hill. They have a hundred and fifty or so students. I'll add two fifty for my Bike Week funds to go to that.
In my thoughts, it's actually five fifty to attend Turi T. right now, but, you know, they mentioned, it's mentioned in here that it's the, you know, the principal, Mr. Robinson, wrote this, you know, there's ninety-eight percent that are free reduced lunch, and they also have the highless homeless student, number of homeless students in the, you know, in the county. So, for them to actually put something like this together, I think is going to have a great effect on the kids that go to school there. So, but I would, if we can find out if they are going to be adequately funded, I would appreciate it, because if not, I will try and dig in the pocket a little deeper.
Okay.
All right. Excuse me, Rob, while we're on that topic. If you're going to be sharing communication, could you do so through the clerk so that we can handle public records and sunshine issues? Sure will, thank you.
I'm going to start calling you sunshine.
We are able to send each other an email as long as we don't respond to each other.
That's true, it's just cleaner if we work with the clerk, we can make sure there's no issues.
Clerk, I'll include the clerk anytime I send them an email, so the clerk can see that too. Okay? But you have to be sure not to respond to it if I send you one.
I've caught myself writing responses and going, oh, we can't do that, so, better not. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you asked the attorney for the Five Hundred East project earlier to talk about proportionate fair share, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about, particularly along LPGA Williamson, you know, what, how transportation is funded by these large projects that we're seeing coming through. The biggest confusion, I think, is that, you know, those are county roads. So even though they're done in partnership with Daytona, and we both have to agree to the transportation needs that are out there, you know, that check, you know, was almost, it was a little under half a million bucks tonight, you know, for that apartment complex, you know, goes to the county, for the county to use in that general area as they see fit. I had a conversation with a reporter today, not from hometown news, it was a different circulation, who, for probably the fourth time, I've had, I've explained this to him. And it, I would guess, you know, and this is just a total guess, I bet the consolidated projects out in that area have spent ten million dollars on transportation for that area. And, you know, it's a tremendous amount of money that's going in. People like to talk about that two-lane Tamoca River Bridge, where you can't really use those types of monies, particularly going from an impact fee perspective to fix the bridge, because the bridge was broken before those projects started. You can only use impact fees to address impacts created by the new development. And I know staff and the county always make the developer mad, which means they're doing a good job of asking for every penny that they can get out of this thing, but it's, you know, it's a very complicated thing to understand, and, you know, it is unfortunate that we've got some folks that, that I think intentionally kind of misrepresent the investment that's made from the folks that are buying land from Consolidated into infrastructure in that area. You know, water sewer impact fees come to us, which is, actually, I want to wrap this up, is, you know, Jim, I think it's time for us to take another look at our water sewer impact fees. You know, we were historically kind of the highest in the East Volusia region, but it's been quite a while since we've looked at it. And one of the reasons that we had a problem out in with the Phase Two of Margaritaville was the water sewer infrastructure that was needed to support that far north and that number of homes. And I'm just not convinced at this point, particularly with the aging of our water facilities, the plant and the, you know, what we have running throughout the city, you know, we really can't afford to divert water sewer revenue to things that should really be covered by impact fees. We need for impact fees to cover all those costs so that we can continue to dedicate, you know, the money that people are paying, you know, either through their residence or their business, into, you know, when they pay their water bill every month, that that money's available for not just providing the service, but for being able to update and upgrade the system that we have in the city.
Okay.
And that's it. Have a good night.
Well said. Thank you. Commissioner Henry?
I'm a little long-winded tonight. Paula won't tap her wrist at me. So, on tomorrow, I will be reading at Palm Terrace Elementary School to the kindergarteners there, so I'll be reading to forty kindergarteners. I'm very excited about that, because I will be reading in my old classroom that I used to teach in, so I will be there at Palm Terrace. I'm very excited about this Arthur coming. We still don't have information on who it is yet, do we?
I forgot the name.
Okay, so Sharon, oh, Sharon Draper, who is one of my favorite authors.
You all got a copy of that sometime, okay?
So Sharon Draper is an awesome author and I'd like to, if you would, do one fifty, donate from the, from my, from... do 150, um, donate from the, uh, from, from Bike Week funds. Um, okay, next thing is, we have some great things happening in Zone Five in the, in the agenda tonight. Um, and as a, two years in, it's really great to see because you think things move really fast, but when you really learn how the process goes, I'm kind of like Hyatt Brown was today. I like to see it move really fast. But, um, some things are coming into fruition, which is the sidewalks, which was $500,000 for the sidewalks. Um, Jimmy Ann Drive getting a million-dollar paving and makeover. And then, um, also Derbyshire Park was in here. So the $500,000 and moving towards that, uh, so, so some really great things happening in, in the zone, which are quite a few of the things that, uh, I, I told residents and residents told me that they wanted to see in the community and especially Jimmy Ann Drive. So, um, it's baseball season. This weekend at, uh, Midtown, they had basketball championship. And, uh, we failed this weekend, but it was wonderful to see our facilities wide open and being used. We had tons of people and they had, uh, swimming. So, uh, which is what I like to see. I like to make sure the facilities are being used. And in addition to the facilities being used, I did request, uh, a comparison of what our fees were in comparison to surrounding areas to use our facilities. And I do believe our facilities are a little bit, we're a little pricey and I think we're pricing residents out of being able to use the facilities. And so it is extremely important to me that the residents of Daytona Beach are able to use the facilities and our facilities are affordable and not have to go to Ormond. And, um, what I realize is that even if you go to Ormond as a non-resident, the fees are still cheaper as non-residents. And that's something that this year I really want to see. So I'd like to know when I'm going to get that comparison. Um, if you could let me know ASAP on what day I can expect that comparison because I requested it about two years ago and I'm back on it now. And I really want to see where we are in that price range. I really want our residents to be able to use our facilities. And also, I want to make sure, I know Paula brought this up, that when people are renting our facilities, they are being, they have, they're being charged more if they have vendors. And so if you rent the facility, whether you have vendors or not, that should be up to you and your business. It should not be, "We're going to make money off of the vendors" because then people really can't afford to use our facilities. And I want to make sure people have access to the facilities. Um, baseball season is here, so if you're complaining about things that, there are no things for the children to do in the community, uh, I advocated two years ago for baseball. Chief Capri has been phenomenal with helping bring baseball back to the community. He and the Daytona Tortugas last year funded baseball. The program was completely funded. Children got uniforms, they got gloves, they got everything that they needed and we still did not have hardly enough teams to put together for our baseball program. We had to go and find teams in South Daytona and ask them to come and play us. So if you're really concerned about what the children and activities that we're providing for the children, they're out there, you just need to take advantage of them. Um, and Chief Capri, hopefully, again, Chief, if you're here?
Yes.
Are, are we doing baseball aga-, I, I, are, are you sponsoring baseball again this year, Chief?
We started this week and I gave, uh, $10,000 of the team's money to cover sponsorship.
Awesome, Chief Capri.
Yes, you know, we're out there this week, we have about a half dozen cops out there with you for, uh, for some baseball.
Awesome. And I, I want to say also with Chief Capri that I had asked you, the week that you were brought on, I asked you if you would have more officers in the pow-, in, in our pow program and, and having them come back to coach because that was something that we needed to do. It was important to try and build that bridge from officers and talking to the children while they were young. And even you yourself coached a team at the basketball season and, and I think that, that was awesome. Yeah, you all lost. You got beat by the Mary Sun team. But, um, so thank you for having those officers and this year, last year, um, you all coached and this year you brought even more officers on to coach. And so thank you for making sure that, that liaison is, is there with the community. Thank you. Um, Grand Preserve. My residents in Grand Preserve, and they're here tonight and they're going to be speaking to you. I did sit with planning to see what, uh, the issues were regarding the new complex that's going to be coming to Grand Preserve. First of all, I want to say that the signage that was putting up, put out there was problematic. Uh, when they took me by to see the signage, the signage was leaning over to the back and you would have thought that it was one of those little signs that said somebody was selling a house or selling a bedroom set or a mattress. You didn't even know that it was signage that was making them aware that there was going to be a meeting for that new apartment complex that's planned to come out there. Um, I sat with planning and that apartment complex is going to be very problematic and it's going to change that community greatly. I just don't believe that we need to have, um, investors coming from other countries and just plopping their, uh, and plopping their, their...
Developments.
Their developments in the middle of our communities and not caring how those communities are going to be affected by it. I'm not going to continue to support, um, a whole bunch of new developments coming in, in to my zone. I mean, we have tons over in the Jimmy Ann area and we have new ones coming over there. We have new ones coming over by Strickland Range and for now, that's enough. I'd like to see some more family houses and some more, um, some ways that we can use that area, those areas or, or encourage, I know we can't because we don't own the land, but encourage more family housing and, and, um, affordable housing. Uh, the, the way this new development is set up, it is going to come right outside. That development has to come through Grand Preserve to get out to LPGA. LPGA is already problematic. And if you have to drive down LPGA when, at the end of the day at 5 o'clock, you know what it takes to get down LPGA and there's no traffic easement. And then part of that is county, so then you have to fight with county to try and get traffic easement. And so I'm standing with my relative, my, my, my people over in, in Grand Preserve tonight. I hope you will hear them out. Um, I met with the entire community, um, about 75 of them on Sunday and I listened to them and, and heard their concerns and I told them that I would really come tonight and ask you all to listen. They, they felt like because it was not in, in other commissioners' communities that no one would care and I told them that we were not that kind of commission. As you can see tonight, when I talked about 32114 area code, which is Paula's zone and which is Quanita's zone and how problematic that was with, uh, um, the health crisis that we have there, that we really and truly do care about other zones and other communities. So just to know that that development is going to cause problems in that family community.
Um, and there was an email that came out this afternoon from Dennis with the, with the schedule because none of the rest of us has seen this. So, like, I, I appreciate what you're saying, I've seen the emails from the folks out there, but, um, my understanding is it's going to Planning Board next month?
Right. And they're, they're, but they started, some of them have gotten their notices, so they're here.
Right. Right, but, I mean, but si- six out of seven of us, Ms. Mayor, I'm not sure you have, at least five out of six, seven of us really don't have any idea what the project is. So, I mean, as much as I appreciate their concerns and I saw their emails, until I see what the project is, it's hard for me to, to, to put the two together.
I understand. I'm just giving you a heads up and if you would like to respond to their emails and go out and, and see or still...
Until I see the plans, I can't comment on anything.
I'll put the information out there and so, um, I'm just putting it out there so that, that you all can expect it, know that it's coming. Um, STEM, which is something that we discussed for the past few years, but we haven't moved on and I'd like to see STEM and pre-planning, um, more so talked about for, uh, our communities. And I realize that we don't have to do a big thing with STEM. For one child to go do STEM at, to do STEM at Embry-Riddle is $975 for one week to do STEM at Embry-Riddle. So, so, uh, our children mainly are priced out of any kind of STEM program. Um, and I think that we could, at the very minimum, do our own STEM program for one week out of the year at one of our community centers for one week, Monday to Friday, do some kind of STEM program. And I've already started talking to some of the students over at Embry-Riddle University and they're willing to come in and help spearhead that STEM program. Um, last year we were fortunate enough that Chief Capri again, um, provided, what, Chief, $10,000?
Scholarships?
Yes.
Through Embry-Riddle?
Through Embry-Riddle. You were able to obtain what kind of scot-, how many?
I think it was like 20 kids through?
20 kid.
Baseball camps and STEM camp and a bunch of camps. So I got more, they got some dollars that are given money year mark for kids. So I jump on early, try to get in there first, get in the spots. You work with them, but Embry-Riddle definitely does a lot of stuff. You gotta find the right partners and move and you work with them.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, with Bike Week fu-, um, Bike Week Funds, 250 to, uh, Palm Terrace Elementary and 250 to Campbell Middle School. You know, out there getting ready for their testing season and so we want to make sure that the principals have what they need to make sure that they have prizes, gifts, whatever they need to do to motivate those children to do well on their, um, end-of-the-year testing because those are our city schools. And I think this is the last thing, which is the Race Foundation is holding its Mr. and Mrs. Mentoring Program, um, uh, dance at YSG on Saturday. And I'm sorry, I won't be able to be there, but I, I think this is what we need. We need more people stepping out and volunteering to bring positive things to the community. And the Race Foundation is really taking a lead in that. I've, I've seen quite a few things just in the past couple of months that they have been doing from backpack giveaways, back-to-school events. The Race Foundation is out there and they're working in the community. And I just want to say to Bernadette Zip and, um, McCants and all of them that your work is invaluable because we can't do it all and there's not enough money for us to do it all. So we need partnerships and we need people like you that will get out there and work in the community. And I know I was long-winded, but that's going to do it for me tonight.
It's alright, good job. Uh, I will piggyback on, uh, well, I'll just wait.
You sure?
Yes, I'll just, she, she stole half my stuff.
And she stole some of mine also, but I'm still going to say it.
She did that growing up, so it's okay.
I think she was reading my, I think she was reading my iPad. Well, first I'd like to start out by congratulating our two chiefs on their promotions. Uh, Chief Drew and Chief Craig on becoming, what are they, deputy city managers? Uh-huh. Center on White Street, but on the opposite side of the street is the Conklin Center. And you know, it's the only center in the world that treats people for what they treat them for. It's not just for blind, blindness on that side. They, you have to be blind, but you also have to have something else wrong. So individuals who may have a brain trauma or some other, um, uh, dilapidating illness of some sort. And you talk about eye-opening and how they help those people learn how to do for themselves to the point that they actually go and get their own apartments and they learn how to clean their apartments. They learn how to ride the bus and, um, it's just amazing. You know, when you've never been without your five senses, it's just amazing how they, how they do for themselves. And I, I really enjoyed it and, uh, they definitely would be on my list in the future for somewhere that I would give. The only place in the world and it's here in Daytona Beach, Florida? I mean, that's amazing. I mean, we should be boasting that place. And, um, it's, they have a young man from Russia. Uh, there was a young African-American woman singing opera and she was blind. And they have, um, mock apartments for them to practice cleaning their apartments. Uh, they take them grocery shopping. I looked at technology on how the computer talks to them and tells them what they're ordering from Publix. And they say that Publix is, um, a store that has excellent customer service. They go there and they have magnets, uh, so that the individuals can tell them what their food is and then they put the magnet on the refrigerator and then it's, it's also braille for them to know what they've run out of. It's just interesting. It's just really interesting how, how that center works and how they are serving those young people. And they told their stories, they shared their stories with us. So there were, there were several of us, but it was, it was my honor to be there as their commissioner to, to see that, that center in action. I'd never been, I'd been to the Blind Center, uh, but I'd never been on that side of the street, so I enjoyed that. Uh, 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 um, mm. This Saturday, uh, at 5:00 PM at BCU, there's going to be a Black History concert and there are going to be several groups performing. If you're looking for something free to do as this month comes to a close, come to this concert. Uh, one of the groups I know that's performing are the Del, Del, Depp Singers. Depp was the, um, the choir director before Dr. Steele. And so these are individuals that sang under him that are coming together collectively to, um, to, uh, to sing. And then there's some other groups as well. But, um, and speaking of BCU, you know, this week we lost, um, our president, my president, from when I was there in 1990, Dr. Oswald Perry Brunson, and his service is going to be on March, on March the 2nd at Bethune-Cookman. Bethune-Cookman, you know, when they spoke, spoke about Bethune Park today, um, when the Browns gave their presentation, I wanted to know, other than saying Bethune Park, what are they going to do that exemplifies Bethune? Other than the fact that it runs into Bethune, Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard? Is it going to be something there that says Bethune? But I'll ask that question as the time comes. But I will say Commissioner May is glad to, to have another commissioner now that wants to say something about Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard besides myself. So maybe something will get done. There's a legitimate need to have activities for our young people and that's why I said, um, you might have been looking at my notes or we don't want to court with this or we're bringing it up again, whatever the case may be. Have we combined leisure services and cultural services? Is that one now? I, I get confused. Once we, once they were separate and, are they one?
They're separate.
They're separate again? Okay. And so, you know, leisure services and cultural services provide activities and they, to me, are like a buffer for the police department. Because if we don't find something for our young people to do, the police will. Okay? So when you think about that, the more we increase activities for our young people to do and, and we, we revive those budgets that Commissioner Henry has alluded to that have been decreased and provide activities for them, then the police don't have to, to introduce themselves. In fact, they need to work hand in hand. Um, when you look at...
Unless they're coaching.
Unless they're coaching. Um, looking at the stats for our families and why they go to Port Orange and Ormond, um, 28% of the population for Daytona Beach is living below poverty level. Only 6% in Port Orange and 3% in Ormond. So, yeah, they can provide better services and, and, and their kids are getting what they need. But our kids have a need as well. And when we look at pricing, our prices continue to over, to be overwhelming. We've built facilities in our communities that the community can't even use. And so we need to think about that. A couple of calls I got, and I've spoke to the manager and the ma-, and the, um, attorney about this in my briefing yesterday, you know, those secret meetings that we have. And I shared with them that, um, that, uh, that I got a few phone calls because, one, why do people have to wait four weeks to, to plan something, to get access to one of our facilities? If this is what our staff does every day, I'm sure that Mr. Willis and his staff can go back to the two weeks that they used to do for someone to have access to our facility. I mean, if someone has a, you know, a need for a repass, they turn that around in a week if the facility's available. So as long as the people have the money for their application fee and for whatever other fees are they're responsible for within that two-week period, I believe we can give people two weeks rather than making them wait four weeks. That's a whole month. And then I, I would prefer to see a facility being used and cost less than not be used and we get no money at all. Cause regardless, we got to pay for the facility. The mortgage is still ours. So I'd rather get some money than get no money. And then again, I, I typed this word in when you said it because I wanted to bring this up again. I, I don't understand why on our applications, we do have our, um, our applicants to also be charged for their vendors. First of all, they're already paying for the utilization of the, the park, the facility or whatever they may be paying for. Once they pay for that facility, that is theirs for the timeframe that they have, have been allotted. And if they bring vendors in, to me, that's offsetting the cost that they have been charged for the utilization of that space. And now we're going to go and dip into their money by charging them for vendors they bring. To me, that's not fair. And I think we need to look at that as, um, as commissioners. Um, perhaps maybe you all don't, don't delve into, um, uh, advertising or, or programming as much as perhaps I strive to do in my zone and try to give people something to do. So you don't look at it like that. But even when I've done things in Daisy Park, they've charged me... But even when I've done things in Daisy Park, they've charged me for vendors, so you know I got an issue with this. So, so we need to look at that, because to me, that's just not fair. Once I pay for someplace, it's my place. That's just like renting a house. Once I rent it, as long as I keep your place respectable and clean, then you have no reason to come there, and I paid my rent. Alright? And then I have this other issue. I've asked this question as well. I know, y'all know this, I'm a little tender here with this one. I know with the MLK Lofts, we agreed to create that parking lot. And for some reason, we thought we still had to create the parking lot, although MLK Lofts is in litigation. So now that we got the parking lot, we just got this pretty parking lot that nobody's using. I can't understand why, and I know they've asked, why can't the Amvets, which is just one house over, utilize that parking lot, make the captain, make the commander responsible? If they prove to not be responsible people to use the facility on the weekends only, then we just rescind the ability to use it. But it's, we're not doing anything with it. We build this parking lot and it's just sitting there behind a fence being pretty. So I think we should consider that as well.
Let's stop right there.
Okay.
You said that you have, you have two commissioners who have asked for those, what was that y'all asked? Two people about the, the vendors.
Yes.
So, you know, and I would give a motion to that if I were allowed to motion. But you have two people, so I, unless someone is opposed to you all bringing us something back, I don't think this is something we need to workshop, because we got a lot of workshops to do. But bring them something back that shows that you have visited this issue, okay? Unless someone else up here is opposed. Is anyone opposed to that? Okay? Because I don't want it to get behind, because this is, this is being stated, and I don't want it just to be stated without us doing something.
Mr. Mayor, these, these fees are adopted by really a different board. About, I don't know how long ago it was, probably four years ago, five years ago? Which, all these were elements of that, at that time, and certainly we can take a look and bring back something, it's different.
And what board was that?
City Commission.
You were on the commission.
City Commission.
Oh, we adopted this board?
Yes.
It, it was adopted since I've been sitting here?
I, I don't know if it was.
See, he said he don't know, and you saying, yeah.
I'm not gonna say that.
You might have been. You and I haven't always been together there. You were commissioner before mayor.
I'm just saying the commission approves whatever.
Well, I'm okay with, with.
Well, you know.
This part of it is something that, this is a minute, this is one part, this is not the whole.
Right.
Thing, so this is one part. But it's been stated, so I don't want it to get rolled under the bus and not come out to fruition.
So point of clarif- point of clarification, what we're saying is we're going to revisit whether or not to charge an applicant their vendor fee for every vendor that they have as well. That's what we're talking, okay, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Alright. My parking lot. Oh.
You on your parking lot?
No, I, I, my page, my notes went to another page. Okay, I believe that I'm good.
Okay, very well. Oh, no, I'm not tapping my watch, I'm just making sure it's on. Remember, I have that.
Now, I just wanna say leisure services fees going up, because I got a, a message from the clerk about the fees for.
Eastern Stars.
Eastern Stars. And last year was three hundred and five dollars, and she sent me a fee, this year was four hundred and fourteen bucks.
Oh, I see.
I, I really just wanna see what we can do. Four hundred and fourteen bucks, man, that's.
What, what, what facility is this?
Derbyshire.
Derbyshire, you know, Derbyshire is my favorite, one of my favorite places in the world, but it's not worth four hundred dollars. I'm just being honest, it's one of my favorite places.
Four hundred and fourteen.
Greatest memories, but it's not really worth four fourteen.
And while we're pricing, could you also tell me the, the cost to rent, uh, City Island? Would you get that price for me, Mr. Manager?
I can just do a whole price point for the facility.
You guys, okay.
Oh, and I have one more question.
These two on the road.
Um, a month ago, I asked for a price list to be at every facility, because it didn't make sense for staff not to be able to tell people what a price costs. Has that been done?
I, I've asked for it to be posted at every facility. For them to be directed, if they go to that facility and that, that person can't answer the question, because we have people there that are not in charge of all that. And they're, they are to be given the phone number and the person, they can, and the direction to, to permitting people in the city.
Okay, well.
Okay, but that's not what I asked for. If our prices are set, why can't we have a price list for the facility, at the facility? That's what they're already doing. See, at Embry-Riddle, we call that the Riddle Runaround. When I can't answer, I tell you to go to somebody else, and they may tell you the wrong, and then you're.
We have different things, that rooms, different rooms are used for, and there's different prices for them.
Right, so if we take Midtown, you got the gym, you got the kitchen, whether you want it or not, you got the dance hall, you got the multipurpose room.
You got, you got the music room.
You got the music room. You've got the music room, right. So that one facility, and you don't have to have every facility at once, just if that facility's rooms are there.
They have the listing of prices, I'm telling you.
Of the facility.
They're, they're supposed to have.
Alright. I'm gonna stop by and see.
Okay, Commissioner Treger?
I love the pictures of the proposed riverfront park. And best of all, they seem to have worked out a formula to pay for it. It's going to be paid partly with the tip money and partly with the money that we budgeted already to keep the park up to snuff. And piggybacking on what Paula said, years ago, I used to know a gentleman named Captain Hall, Captain Hall. He was very much involved with the Blind Center. And every year now, I believe they have like a blind walk for the people who want to come and walk across the street. Uh, it's kind of, I guess interesting is the word. But you have not lived until you had a dinner in the dark.
I agree.
Yeah. Mayor knows what I'm talking about. You are blindfolded, and you go into this room, and it is dark, and you can't see anything. You don't know what you're eating, you don't know where you're eating. They give you a few tips, make sure that your glasses are pushed back. I never did find my salad, but I did find my dessert.
Well, I was gonna say, I found my dessert in my neighbor's dessert, too.
Well, you did me one better, didn't you? But anyhow, it is an experience, and you do get to appreciate your senses. Because you really don't know until you're deprived of one or two of them. That's all for tonight.
Well, thank you very much. Commissioner Delgado?
I have no piggybacking. Fresh, fresh issues. I think it's good, I mean, everyone's talking about, I think, the same kind of thing, which is circling back to old ideas or things that were discussed in the past that we just need to continue following up on, so that we can see them come to fruition. So I just wanted to touch on the homeless shelter. Last meeting, we talked about a couple of different things. One was talking with the group, the Soldier One Group, I think I'm getting that right, about whether they would be interested in going out to looking at other sites in the city, particularly. I was hoping that they would look out by the First Step Shelter, at that six hundred plus or minus acres of land that we have out there, that we already have kind of set up for. We had to spend money to move the utilities and the access points on, across the road already. So I didn't know what the progress was on that, or what the status was on that. I'd like to see that happen in the near future, if there's any interest there in getting them to do that. That's an important part of the First Step Shelter, is having, you know, steps two and three in the wings and not years and years away. And we also asked, I also asked about getting some ideas of what it would cost to have a quote-unquote "safe zone" out there. Just some site prep work, some things like that. So I'd like to not forget that item and have it come back in the near future, so we can go over it. I know it's, I don't think we set it to be up for this week, but just, that's something that I think we really, a discussion we need to really have. Because I think that could be a solution to a lot of what we're talking about, and what Commissioner Henry, you're talking about, you know, the housing issues. That's something that we have, as a commission, have talked about being a priority. Mayor, I know that's a priority for you. And so that's, that's something that we need to look into. I was also interested in seeing what the commission as a whole thought about. Workforce housing is not gonna be solved in one or two easy steps, and affordable housing isn't, small houses, small houses aren't necessarily affordable houses, et cetera. But we do have a lot of lots on the, in the city that are not on the tax roll, not being used, and it might be. And I, one, an idea I have is, why don't we look at some of the lots that we have in the different zones and open them up to a planned development, to let people build smaller houses, maybe multiple smaller houses on a single property, where the impact fees have already been paid, change the setbacks, change the minimum size requirement, to see if it can be economically feasible for someone to develop for ownership and in use, multiple small houses on a single lot, so we can get the lots back onto the tax roll, have affordable home ownership for people, not necessarily workforce housing, but affordable housing for people. And, you know, let this be done by smaller groups or smaller developers, not necessarily, you know, a big outside unit or, or someone like Consolidated Tamoka, but maybe some smaller, maybe some individuals who want to try their hand at doing something like that. So that, that's something I'd like us to talk about. If there's no interest in doing that, then that's fine, but I think that would be something that we could look at doing. Again, we have lots of land, it's sitting inactive, it's not being used. And it let, would let people develop smaller properties that fit the flavor of the community. There is a project kind of like this, Beachside. Mr. Jaggar, what's the?
Carlton and North O'Leander.
Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Carlton.
I don't have the address in front of me, but I can look it up and circulate it if you'd like. I think, I think Commissioner May is saying Carlton and.
North O'Leander.
So, you know, something like that is, you know, I, I think we have lots of property that could be identified and used that way. And that's kind of, again, part and parcel, no pun intended, with our efforts to clean up. And I know that we just got an update from the city attorney on some of the efforts that we've had to enforce, do the code enforcement and collect on the liens and all of that. So when we have these properties that maybe we're taking ownership of, or properties we identify that can be put back into use, I think this is a way of using them, so they don't just sit there empty and in wait of something to happen that, that never will happen. I think it sends probably a bad message, just have vacant or empty property that just runs down and eventually becomes, you know, just a blight. So that's, that's an idea that I have. I mean, I, that's, you know, certainly, there's lots of pros and cons. But my thought would be if we opened it up, just solicit some proposals, and just, you know, looked at on a case-by-case basis, because it would be a PD to see what people are interested in doing. So that's, that's an idea that I have. But other than that, I would like to see us come back and talk more about, with the Soldier One Group, to see if they're interested in going out there, and then getting a little bit, some more of the answers to the questions we asked about the numbers for First Step Shelter, and also the budget numbers for, for the city staff. That's all I have, thank you.
I think Soldier, Soldier One is scheduled to come in and meet with us the first of March. Second week of March, that's what I was.
Um.
So we have been in touch with them, and that's, that's getting it set up.
Good, thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd suggest, I know we've had, we've talked about affordable housing, tiny housing, you know, a lot of different concepts. And I think when he's, we just set up a Saturday, where we, for a half a day Saturday, talk about affordable housing and get, and get it lined up with different presenters for the various types of affordable housing, because there's a lot of different things that you may want to look at.
Okay, well, yes, that's okay.
You're gonna say something about what he said.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, let's go ahead and get that, get a date that people are, can, can do it on a Saturday. That means two Saturdays in the next couple of months.
I have, one thing is that afternoons work best for me, number one. Afternoons would be fantastic for me. Second thing is, about two months ago, maybe even two and a half months ago, I started requesting a map of my zone. And because of sunshine laws, I cannot communicate with anybody on the commission. So I did the same thing you did, Commissioner Delgado, and I started pulling all of the spaces in my zone. And we were researching, changing the square footage, in terms of what is acceptable for a lot size. And I think we're still researching that, to see how small could we go? Nine hundred square feet is where we're at right now, and the possibility of reducing that, and then also reducing the lot size, if that's possible. So we're all, we just cannot communicate.
Well, that's why we communicate now, though.
Oh, we can.
And one of the things that I've noticed, even in the last meeting, we're doing a better job of, as an overall body, this was the first meeting that we've had more dialogue and more pushing. The last meeting was very much like this. And so, you know, I said, it's the last time. We have to push staff, and they have to respond, and we have to push ourselves. Because this, this requires, all of this that has been said, that all of it requires a lot of time. All of what each of you are doing to study and to research your areas, and to be in these different places, and to support these different things, requires a lot of, a lot of time and, and effort. Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Treger?
I've long advocated for infill housing. And I know we have given some of the developers waivers on the size of, of the lot, or the setbacks or anything. And I know that long ago, maybe before this new LDC, or maybe in this new LDC, that older homes were permitted to be, new homes were permitted to be built on the footprint of an older home. I was told recently, that's not so. I don't know if it's still in the Land Development Code, but it should be. If we give some of the big developers a break on their setbacks, I think we should give it also to the smaller individual builder who wants to build on the footprint of an older property.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, with that in mind, if, if, if the, can we make this an actionable item to either vote on and direct the staff to do it, or put it away and not talk about it until it comes back up again? Because I think that.
Which item is this?
The idea of looking into identifying some parcels of land and getting proposals to do, you know, small houses on that. Develop, you know, we're talking about developing a project or opening it up to let people develop smaller houses in certain areas on land that the city is otherwise not getting the tax benefit from.
Oh, um.
Can we, I mean, do we?
You, you, if, if, if we can do what you guys desire to do as it relates to that. So that's, that's, if you say that's what you want to do, then we will, we'll support in that.
Well, I just want to say, I mean, I, I think as, we have limited resources and limited energy, and if, if people think it's gonna be, you know, a bust, then, you know, I, I don't want to lead us down a, a blind trail, but if people think it's, I guess all we would do is find out if there's interest in the, in the community to build and go from there. That would be the.
Well, well, two things, two things. One is, we all know that, I don't care where I live, if I live in a house that has twelve hundred or fifteen hundred square feet, the residents, maybe not the folks in here, when you try to start building a house that's six hundred square feet next door to them, are going to show up and say they don't want that. So this is a process that you have to think through to say, do we want to formulate a community like this? And I think that that's something that staff has to perhaps give us some suggestions on and some options, because just saying we're gonna look at these different lots that you all have identified, and that, you know, we, we all, a lot of us are homeowners, just, just think about how your neighbor's gonna feel. I can recall in LPGA, when they wanted to change the lot sizes, people showed up in here. And they didn't change the lot size to six hundred square feet. So we have to, have to think, it sounds like a, and it is a good idea. We all want to create something that people, that's affordable. But I think we have to do it in a deeply planned way.
Sure.
You know, you know.
Mr. Mayor, it, from my meeting with the city manager and my private meeting, those secret meetings that I had with the city manager and city attorney, we, this was something that we had discussed, and like houses can go near like houses. So even if we took that concept on a parcel of land and like sizes have to be with like sizes, is that the code? Is that the?
Yes, and you'd really have to, and I think the mayor and you both are, are something that's important, is neighbors are gonna wonder what you're gonna do with it. So if you do it where it's significantly different than what's in the neighborhood, then you, you need to have an area that we can zone for that purpose, so it's not encroaching on somebody else's neighborhood.
Right.
And then you can build those kind of things. But I think if, if you go into my neighborhood or your neighborhood or any of our neighborhoods and try to do that next to somebody else, they're gonna be.
They're gonna run you out of there.
They're gonna be very vocal about it, I'm sure.
But you know what? At least you will have tried, and there are many people who believe that we aren't trying hard enough. So if we at least put it forth and begin the process, and then the community decides that they don't want that, then hopefully the people in this room who are for it will advocate as strongly in support of it as they do against the commission sometimes, right? So we're, if we try, at least you have an opportunity to say yes or no. to say yes or no, or support the concept.
Well, okay, well, I think that should be, this should be a part of the overall workshop on housing and affordable housing, because as I said, I, I think, even if we found a neighborhood, or a community, or a block of land that was a certain size, that we say we're gonna try it here, may be better. But there are different ways, but I think all of it needs to be worked out.
Yeah, and I'm, I, I mean, everything I know about politics, I learned watching Game of Thrones. I mean, I, it's worked so far. I, I don't, I mean, I don't know a lot of how this stuff is actually gonna be implemented, but that's, I mean, that's for the staff to tell me, right? I mean, I don't need to know how to build these things.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
I don't need to know how to do these things. I just need to kind of, you know, have the discussion and learn what the general concept is. So that's really, I guess, what I was saying, is I'd like to see us moving forward, and I think the, the, the workshop you're talking about is an important part of it, and hopefully we'll, and I think there's enough will now to move past just the workshop phase, to coming with something out of the workshop that we can actually put into place. Not, not like, you know, studies and workshops, to me, have kind of been a, a dead end, sometimes, where we just, we agree to talk about it, and we don't move on. So whatever that final form takes, I, I just hope that we'll put something into action after we have this next meeting, on whatever, whatever shake that becomes. I mean, you're identifying an area, whatever the case may be. I, I care less about what the solution looks like, and just that we try to find a solution to this problem, and we actually do something, and not, not just talk about it. So I, I, I appreciate the feedback and the way of thinking. It's a, one of the things that we're hamstrung is we can't talk and brainstorm privately, we have to do it up here, and so it, it comes off, you know, you worry about sounding stupid, or saying something that, you know, someone else has already thought through. But, I mean, that's the reality of it. So I appreciate it, your thoughts, Mayor, and I hope we can do that.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, before you start your comments, were you gonna direct him to do something?
Yes.
Go ahead, before you lose that thought.
Well, it's just that, I think he already knows that we're gonna have a Saturday workshop. She doesn't like Saturday, though, but-
I do, but I'm okay with afternoons, please.
Oh, Saturday afternoon, okay. All right. She gotta do her work in Saturday morning or something.
Look at your, look at your calendars and let us know what, what dates. We'll give you some dates to look at, but plan on Saturday.
All right. Make it mid, mid-morning, something, not seven o'clock morning, eight o'clock, ten o'clock morning to late afternoon, eleven, something like that. They'll try to work around our schedules, okay?
All right, so what I wanted to share was, Commissioner Delgado brought this up, and it totally slipped my mind, but I had a conversation with someone this past weekend. I have a, a resource, someone for you to talk to, Mr. Mayor. I believe you would be the person they would talk to. See, Bob, this is not, it's open, okay? But this is, in St. Paul, they partnered with Catholic charities also regarding their, our housing.
First step shelter.
Yeah, first step shelter. And what they did, Commissioner Delgado, was they put the housing on top of the shelter. It's called higher ground. So she sent a flyer and some information, and I also asked for her credentials, and I'm wanting, do I have to send this email to the, to the clerk to send to the mayor, Mr. Attorney?
The mayor knows not to respond. It, it, for all communication, it's better that the clerk distributes, just so we don't run into issues.
So was that a yes or a no?
That was, send it to the clerk.
Okay. But, but, and then also in here, there was another program she shared with me, that was a, you know, there needs to be some type of transitional employment for people that have been homeless, because their skills may not be up to par to go right into, you know, a forty thousand dollar job. So what they did was, and this might be perfect for us, I don't know what our hotels do with their, with their mattresses now, but they had a second chance recycling, where they recycled mattresses. And it gave them an opportunity to have some type of job where they could say that they, they went to work on time, you know, someone could actually vouch for them as an employee. So all of this is in this email, and I thought about it when he brought up First Step Shelter, that I had this email that I meant to share with you. So I, I want you to, to talk to this person, maybe there's something you can glean, because they partnered with the same people we're partnering with for our shelter, and, and see what we can get out of that. Maybe we can, particularly with you being the chairperson of First Step Shelter.
Okay.
Okay?
Send it to the clerk, and then I guess she'll send it to me.
All right.
The clerk will typically copy everyone, so it's all the same information as well.
Yes. Okay, excellent. Very excellent dialogue tonight. Appreciate all of your comments and all of your thoughtfulness about moving our city forward. Earlier, we had a, what I think was a very important workshop on any item that I think has an opportunity to help transform our downtown into something that people from all across the globe could be proud of. So looking forward to having that come before us. Most of what I've had to talk about has been mentioned, but I will say this, with the new ruling as it relates to Pottinger, would you read what that means or review that for us? Does that mean anything different, or?
Well, Pottinger, the settlement was recently repealed by the court. So, so the Pottinger restrictions, which was merely a settlement down in South Florida as to what would be provided, to persons who are homeless and accused of crimes that involved basic human functions, such as sleeping in the park. Those voluntary restrictions, which are part of the settlement, have now been lifted by the court. The essential requirements of the law are still applicable, the theories that behind the settlement and the court supporting that settlement are still in place. And so the law is still good law, and, and something we still need to be cognizant, cognizant of in Daytona, where we don't have the facilities that Miami has now deemed to have available to the homeless. So I'll be, I'll be glad to brief everyone on that.
Okay. All right, I, I would appreciate that. Very happy about the bus benches. That's, that's very happy, and I've already received lots of good feedback from folks on that. Midtown, as Commissioner Henry said, was, was jumping this past weekend, although the Henrys went 0-2 in the championship round, we were not very happy about that, but it was popping with children. And the thing that I want to commend the staff on, at Midtown, and all of our basketball facilities this year, because in the past, we have had situations that were somewhat challenging to manage. The parents, the children, the staff, everyone governed themselves, from my perspective, all the times I was in the gym, which was quite a bit. Everyone governed themselves quite appropriately. It was just an excellent year of activity and action for our kids, where adults behave like adults should behave. And therefore, the children behave like children will behave, because they model what we do. And it was a great season and a great campaign. And so I was very happy with that. I, too, will be at Palm Terrace tomorrow. Remember Palm Terrace is the most challenged school that we have in our city as it relates to their academic performance. They're at a critical juncture in, in their development. So we want to continue to support, support that school. Some time ago, I mentioned about us wanting to figure out a way for us to do surveys of our staff. Tomorrow, I will email the city clerk an example of, of another municipality's survey that they are using, and the procedures that they are using, for us to have an opportunity to review what they're doing, because it's easy to do, and it's online. It will give us an opportunity to get feedback from our residents on things like the half-cent sales tax pretty quickly. We could easily do a survey, and they just go online and tell us how we're doing. Because, you know, I've often said this in here, I don't have the time to do what I used to do, and, but I want to know what people think. And knowing what they, and this is an easy way, we're not always gonna like what they tell us, but they can, they will at least have an opportunity in a way to say to us, and then we have an opportunity to, each, each of you could easily say, easily create a, a survey for your zone, or for your area, that you want to know what people want done in this area, or on this particular item. And so it's, I think it's just critical, in this day and age, with social media and people wanting more access to their government, it's critical that we give them an opportunity to speak to us as often as possible. And so I will share that hopefully tomorrow, and then she can share it with all of you, and then we'll come back and discuss it, and hopefully consider what we can do moving forward. Palm Terrace, that was one other thing. Oh, not every city in America, in almost no city, perhaps no city our size, has every year a Super Bowl, you know, and the race supersedes and trumps in terms of the size of it, the Super Bowl. And so on Sunday, we had a magnificent day of beauty, and we had a, what was, for race fans, you know, a good race. But I say this to say that the challenges of that on our resources, someone challenged me today on social media, saying we had a police force three times the size of our city. Well, when you have a Super Bowl, and then you have Bike Week, and then you have a beach, your city is larger than the people who live in the city. We are a bigger city, we are a bigger city with a bigger personality on the world stage. When people talk about Volusia County, and they talk about Central Florida, this city's name recognition, you know, is as big as Tampa, city that's five or 10 times our size. So we have to remember that we have greater challenges than the size that we have. But to that end, we also have some other tremendous challenges that we are faced with, that we are grappling with, as it relates to the amount of income that our residents are earning within the community, somewhere around the average of twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. So all of those things factor in to a lot of what we have talked about tonight. And so I want to say to you all, as a commission, everything that you are bringing to the table is relevant. It may seem like a lot, and it is a lot, but we have a big job that's not easy to do. But that's why it's important that all of the ideas that you have, that you not be burdened by them, or be frustrated by the slow progress. Because I will say this, that for almost 10 years, I have wanted to see Vine Street with a sidewalk on it. Almost 10 years, but it's on the agenda tonight. I didn't realize until I was, kept riding down Jimmy Ann Drive, and then I kept getting calls, how bad Jimmy Ann was. Then I asked staff, how many times have we repaired Jimmy Ann Drive? And they said, a number that I hate to reflect on, something like four hundred times. It was better to repave Jimmy Ann and to repair it than to keep fixing it. But I wanted to see that fixed. So I say all of that to say, we have a lot tonight in this, that we accomplished tonight, to be proud of. But I say all of that to say that, keep pushing, keep pushing the staff, and progress will happen. We, I asked the city attorney, I don't know if you are ready yet, but I want you still to tell us what we can and cannot do as it relates to advocating for the half-cent sales tax, because I think that's important. I'm gonna be going to a lot of the community meetings, and I want to make sure that I'm fair, and within the constraints of the rules of law.
Mayor, did you, I'm sorry, before Mr. Jagger starts, did you have an additional Bike Week? That you said you were gonna wait till you, your turn? Was it for Palm Terrace, perhaps?
Oh, no. No, but Palm Terrace needs the money. You can give them two hundred and fifty bucks.
Hundred and fifty dollars, okay.
And you all know that ideas, as it relates to, for me, of children is where my passion and work is, is. Oh, I want to say also, I appreciate we're gonna be at the celebration on Saturday, and my namesake will be performing a piece entitled, "The ABCs of Black History." So we're excited about that, and appreciative of what you're doing to challenge our kids, and, and what everybody's doing. So, yeah, I, I couldn't think of another one, but if I do, I'll email you.
Mr. Mayor, actually, could I add two fifty to Palm Terrace as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I did circulate last week a memorandum on that, so-
I didn't see it.
All right, well, let me resend it to you.
But resend it to me, and make sure it says that in the heading, so I don't-
Will do.
I don't read over.
Will do. The bottom line is, the commission is free to express their opinion on the half-cent sale tax, sales tax. However, there is a preemption or prohibition on the city expending money to promote or advertise any item which goes to a referendum or vote. So the city can't spend money, but the commission individually or collectively can express opinions on those matters.
Okay.
But Bob, we could put on the website what we would do with the money, the projects, that's not advocating for the-
Yeah, I should add, you're, you are allowed to publish informational items, yes.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
May I ask a question, please? My intent was to meet with residents in certain areas and give them a list of roads, and the conditions of the roads, and meet with them as a group. And the reason I have delayed in returning any correspondence is because I had to wait for information back on legally what my limitations were in meeting with the groups. So that's what the delay was about. But as it stands now, if you would like to invite me to your group, let's say the first month, then I am more than happy to attend the event. But I had to wait first for clearance on what could and could not be done. All right? We have a list.
We're meeting again, but that isn't final.
It's not final, but it's just a list of, exactly. What I would like is to give them just a little bit more information in terms of what we have, which all of you have, I believe, too, for your zones. And I believe they also printed out a map of what it would look like. And I just wanted to give it to them and share it with them.
You know, I'll tell you, what I've been sharing is-
Please.
Is the Zone Four roads list, the, the different buckets that we're kind of breaking things up into. I'm saying that I'm recommending that there be a fourth bucket that's for either overruns or for reserves, that would be five percent or eight percent, or something along those lines. And that, when we're looking at the resurfacing, that I'm prioritizing residential over non-residential, and sidewalks, you know, my, you know, my position is to prioritize near schools first, and then in the more heavily trafficked areas, second.
And I'm going to make a request publicly. I'm, for all the commissioners, I'm requesting that I take one of the city staff with me to help me in helping convey the information the night that I attend the event.
That's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other commentary from the commission? Mr. Manager, you have any comments? Okay, this meeting is going to adjourn at this time, and what we will do is take a five-minute break, and at eight-thirty, we will commence with the public commentary, which we expect to be spirited. Let's go ahead and get started. We're going to go ahead at this time and commence with our community, comments from our community. You have two and a half minutes. Please be sure to state your name and your address. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Bill Lampier, and on deck is Steve Burnett. Ladies and gentlemen, if you can clear the aisles so that the people can, thank you.
Oh, yes. Okay, to the Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, please chief, city clerk, manager, I don't think, oh, the city attorney. Did I miss anybody?
No.
Okay, that took 12 seconds, okay. I'm here as the president for the Grand Preserve HOA, and to present you with so far, 114 petitions that we received from residents. We have many of the residents who are here tonight in support. They're opposed to the development of rezoning at LPGA. And if I could read this into the minutes very quickly, this is the copy of the petition. As owners of the residents of Grand Preserve, Homeowners Association, Grand Preserve, we would like to petition the City of Daytona Beach Planning Board, Mayor Henry, city commissioners, not to approve the high-density rezoning of the property at LPGA and Grand Preserve Way. The Emerson International Multi- The Emerson International Multifamily Development. Plan Development General Rezoning Application, DEV 2018-141. It's called the Development. There are many concerns as to the effect we will have on the community and the quality of life. We're aborted by the preserve and when we purchased the Grand Preserve, owners were told it would always remain that way. The property is zoned professional, which would make a good neighborhood fit for us and many of the, uh, us that were knowing this. Development is also has, uh, wetlands which cannot be developed, but the impact of over 300 apartments, it'd be 336 to be exact, and over 1,000 people in four buildings and, uh, on this parcel of land. The development also, I don't really state it that, so, uh, getting lost here. Okay, right across the LPGA from this property is building the, uh, East 500. Right now, traffic at times make it very hard to get in and out of Grand Preserve. Going east on the LPGA, which results many residents having to go west on LPGA and turn on a crossover. With the increase in population, this will become a greater danger and more traffic. There's also a concern of people exiting onto Grand Preserve Way.
Okay, your, your time's up, but why don't you do this for me? You got a letter, your time's up.
Okay.
Why don't you do this? If you want to give your, a copy of your letter to the clerk.
We'll give them all, all petitions.
Okay, just give it to her and she'll make sure we all get one? Are you going to give her all the petitions?
There's 114 of them.
Okay, that's fine. Just give them to her.
Just hand them to the assistant. Thank you.
Do you want, uh, we have to send each commissioner and then?
No, sir. Just give those petitions to them and we'll take care of it.
But I do want you to call me or email me. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Burnett and on deck is Carol Hall Pelion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, first, let me thank Commissioner Henry for spending time at our, uh, subdivision last Sunday, Commissioner May for the extensive phone call and reception we had today, and Commissioner Reed for responding to my email. Um, I am also here to oppose this, uh, project, uh, titled DEV 2018-141, which will rezone property to accommodate 336, uh, unit apartment, uh, proposed by Emerson International and LPGA Boulevard at the entrance to the Grand Preserve Southern Division. As one of 200 homeowners in that area for the past seven years, I have several concerns about this project. I will mention only one this evening due to the limited time. When we bought our home, we expected the development would continue adjacent to our home and it would be consistent to the existing professional and medical buildings on LPGA. It's my opinion, a project of this scale will negatively affect our property values, but more importantly, I believe this project will change the character of the neighborhood. As an analogy, I believe that anyone that buys a home at the end of an airport runway has no right to complain about the noise. However, building an airport runway at the end of, in, in an existing facility with existing homes causes significant problems. I am not an anti-growth person. Uh, I just believe due consideration should be given to property owners who are already in place. Given current vacancy rates in existing apartments and projects under construction, I question the need for this project in the first place. But let's assume for a minute that there is a need. There are lots of available land on LPGA to build this project that isn't in the front yard of a existing single-family home. I've never opposed anything that the commission has agreed to because I believe you have an incredibly difficult job to balance the interests of residents and businesses. You generally make decisions that are in the best interest of the community. That said, I can't imagine any resident of Daytona Beach being in, proactively in favor of this development. There is no benefit to anyone in Daytona Beach. The only beneficiary of your yes vote is a foreign company with zero roots in our community and that vote is to the detriment of the 200 people who live in Grand Preserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Hall Pelion and on deck is Mary Van Buren.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow commissioners. My name is Carol Hall Pelon. I reside at 440 Dehune Drive. I'm here to bring your attention the need to stop the rezoning for the 26 acres at our Grand Preserve entrance, to which we maintain and light with our homeowners dues. These 26 acres are known wetlands and they are the front of the certified easements of the St. John Waterway, which is a conservative area, conservation area. The UK group that has come in, when I asked them what they would do with it, they just basically shrugged their heads, didn't know anything about the wetlands. But if you look at their little outline, you'll notice they put at least about, about a half an inch of wetlands, which you're not going to be able to tell an animal or anything else to stay on that little half inch of land. The Emerson, the Emerson Sanctuary Development, as this group calls itself, will be destroying this area and the preserve area containing animals, forcing these scared homeless Florida life, which could be quite large at times, from bear to deer, all coming into our yards and our streets. Unknown dangerous encounters for our walkers, bikers, our pets, but most of all for our children that are walking to the school in dark at bus stops or simply at play in our areas. The only place for these animals is into our neighborhood, into our backyard, out onto LPGA Road, causing accidents, and into the Twin Lakes Urgent Care Medical Parking Lot in the pond. You're condensing these animals off 26 acres. They've got to go somewhere. The Emerson Sanctuary is infringing upon this natural spread, spring fed system that our neighborhood has four ponds and one small, we call, which we call the lake, which we already have wildlife dependent upon and if we purchase for the privacy of our family neighborhood. The footprint of adding 1,000 people, placing trash in one small area, if you will look at the little document that they gave, the drawing, is about approximately the size of one parking space. 1,000 people putting trash in one parking space is not going to work. It's ridiculous and they also put the trash right at our exit, which is right near our entrance pond, which is right off the little piece where they stuck their sign in sideways, which none of us could read the sign. The massive parking lot will butt up against several private back, backyards, not being seen on the drawings nor were these owners contacted.
Thank you, Mayor. Your time has expired, I'm sorry. Our next speaker is Mary Van Buren and on deck, I believe it's Hope Weiss.
Good evening, I'm Mary Van Buren and I live at 112 Brasswood Court in Grand Preserve. I want to thank Commissioner, uh, Henry for coming out to speak to us about the proposed rezoning of the 26 acres that are at our front entrance on LPGA Boulevard. Um, I won't repeat what the other speakers have said. Um, one of our big concerns is traffic. Um, there's, would be an easement onto Grand Preserve Way. Um, we already have a lot of people coming out that way, cutting through our development, um, speeding, blowing through, uh, stop signs, et cetera. So we don't look forward to that, um, increasing in the future. Um, we're also concerned about traffic on LPGA Boulevard, which is of course going to become even more congested in the future, as we all know, um, with traffic from Latitude, Sam's Club, Buc-E's and so on. Um, I don't see why we have to have an apartment complex right at our entrance when 500 East is going to be kitty-corner virtually across the street, um, from the proposed sanctuary at Daytona. I think that's an awful lot of congestion all in one area. And as people have said, it's going to change the nature of our neighborhood dramatically. Um, so we hope that when this issue comes before you, that you will turn it down. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, I believe it's Hope Weiss, and on deck is Norma Bland. Is there a Hope here? Okay, our next speaker is Norma Bland.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commission.
Good evening, Ms. Bland.
I'm going to say Happy New Year to every one of you because this is my first time in 2019, so I'm back. My expression of concern is the city ordinance, if there is one, which excludes the opening of gaming rooms, internet cafes for public consumption. Realizing this is a delicate topic, but I'm here today for the purpose of law and any mandates of record concerning the issue upon explanation and reviewing the rule of law for clarification. After voters on Amendment Three stressed a desire for the cafes, what does case law ordinance override the wishes of Florida voters? I know that there is a state constitution and I want to know, is this item crafted within the constitution of the state of Florida? Uh, Attorney Jagger, I would like for you to meet with me if possible, so that we can go over this and you can maybe give me some information. There are several businesses that are LLCs that have approached me about the cafes. I'm not talking about places that have drugs, guns and prostitution. I'm talking about legitimate business that will bring revenue into our city. Also, I'm working on a prospectus for a community garden and I'm asking the city to donate a small parcel of that land and lease it for $1 per year so that young people can cultivate horticulture skills once again, because they don't teach that in schools anymore. So, thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you. And Mayor, I see you've got that wondrous look on your face. I'll call your mom and check on it.
She's all right.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Belinda Haynes.
You're missed. Won't touch that near. John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Uh, number one, with regard to, um, people vanishing, staff vanishing, the county has a retirement in their agenda, so all the people that are retiring is listed, so you might want to do that because whenever it went, not a clue. And I've been here 40 years, so there've been a lot of times when people just vanish and you don't know they've retired. So if you could do that, it'd be simple and, uh, staff and, uh, council would know. Uh, secondly, um, in the presentation a little earlier, uh, they were going to raise the land a lot, the, uh, river. I'm wondering whether the city might, uh, contribute, uh, the dirt from the location out west as our portion to the renovation. Now, I've said it often enough that it becomes, uh, common, free is a good price. Uh, we were going to build a new riverfront park. We were going to spend the money to do a lot of these improvements. Two, um, somebody came along and offered 15 million to do what we were going to pay for, so we're going to get it free. Secondly, we spend about $200,000 a year maintaining that. We're going to still pay $200 million for a much improved park and these improvement will be funded by a TIF of almost $601,000. So we're going to get free land, much improved park, at no additional cost from what we're already paying. So I think it's one of those things like PAL, YMCA, we have those buildings and now people are maintaining those buildings and taking care of the kids at free. Likewise, one more last thing, if you can do it, if and when, um, Papa Warner comes here for you, do what they do good or best, uh, that you not charge them. That's 400 kids taken off the streets at no cost to the city. I think that's a great deal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Belinda Haynes and on deck is Jim Sweeney.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. Belinda Haynes, 464 North Charles Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm here to tell you guys thank you for being more transparent with the community. I really am seeing a lot of improvement and that's thankful from my point of view as a taxpayer. But I had, uh, received a couple of calls about do day, do day or whatever day they call it, um, that they was out of protocol. Uh, they did not get the proper license. But I think that the, the leaders in the community, uh, some of the young leaders like Mr. Rail Black, he had to do protocol. They're no different. We need to do protocol. And, you know, I'm glad that you having a mayor's workshop or you having a mayor's meeting day. I was glad to hear about that. And one leader in the community, Mr. Tony Servance, he's going to help pass out the flyers to help do that. But I'm proud of you guys for opening up to the community and trying to get more things done as a commission and a mayor. And I see more transparency. And I also am concerned about the young, the young people don't have nowhere to go. But I'm asking the, the individuals that had this do day, do day concern, that they go by protocol. And I have talked to Mr. Rail Black and a lot of other young leaders in the community. We have a lot of great entrepreneurial young leaders in this community and I'm asking the mayor and the commissioners, try to support them a little bit, to help them move along to get things done. Because they put a lot of effort, these young leaders put a lot of effort and time into our kids and into our communities. And I know Ms. Henry, she's been doing a lot, so have you, Ms. Reed. You've been out to the Gardens of Daytona and I know you understand where I'm coming from. But I'm asking you guys to, you know, be a little bit linear on the prices of where they want to have their activities with their vendors. I've been getting calls about that, Mayor. It, it, it's, it's kind of overpriced for them. They're just starting up, but they helping our community though. So they giving back, well, what are, what are we giving? The prices are ridiculous. And I will ask for the commissioner and the mayor to also look into that. Thank you so much and have a beautiful afternoon.
You too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Sweeney and on deck is, I believe it's Laquisha Pollard. You can give that to her and she'll put it into the record.
Uh, my name is Jim Sweeney. I came here about a month ago. I own the property at 20 North Halifax Avenue. Uh, I do the Bike Week parking at 20 and 24 North Halifax, uh, excuse me. Uh, we've been doing this for the last 14 years, permitted and legal with no violations. Before that, it was done by the prior owners, Rice, Rose and Snell. Uh, we were never part of the master plan. We had a special exception. Here are my permits. I put it in the packet. And here is, uh, the minutes from the meeting in 2007, July 18th, that stated Biketoberfest and Bike Week Private Property Guidelines. Resolution approving an amendment to the Biketoberfest and Bike Week Guidelines to allow, and this is important, to allow event, event parking on unapproved vacant lots located at 20 North Halifax Avenue. I think that's where the confusion may lie. This was an amendment, it was already legal to park with a structure. I have a paved parking lot where I park the motorcycles, a vacant lot where we park the cars. The current amendment, uh, the current amendment, it, it seems like they copied and pasted that exact thing from the 2007. I'm really glad I keep all my paperwork and I'm very appreciative for Sunshine laws. Um, Section 5 Parking states, "Event parking on unapproved vacant lots is allowed in the area bounded by Main Street, Halifax, Auditorium and Peninsula Drive. Signage shall be professionally maintained, but prices," it goes on. It's absolutely word for word what I had passed here before. The city, uh, Assistant City Manager Paul McKittrick helped me through the process. This is the Biketoberfest 2007 Master Plan. It states businesses that also within those stated boundaries are parking back in 2007. This is the 2019 Bike Week Master Plan. Those same properties within the boundaries that I am in also parking. Um, we had an appeal. I was at the chamber and at the chamber the day the Bike Week Master Plan was approved, I was told by the Assistant City Manager, uh, Mr. Morris, "Mr. Sweeney, I'm not going to debate you. It makes no sense to me. Just appeal it." I came and introduced myself to you at the meeting, just to make sure you knew who I was, and at that meeting, I was told by Mr. Chisholm and by Mr. Morris, "Just appeal it. This isn't the place." I went and appealed it. I ask you to watch the denial of the appeal. Um, it was on, uh, February 12th. Please go to the website and watch it. I'm trying to get my parking back. I've done nothing wrong and I'm trying to remedy the situation.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? Okay. Your issue is that you had been operating this way, correct? Since what year, 2000?
We, we purchased the property in 2005.
So since 2005, you've been operating in exactly the same way until the present time? And when you reapplied to do all of your normal business as you normally would, year upon year with approval, this year you were denied? And if I'm understanding, you'd like to know why?
Correct. What happened was we were a special exception until 2018. In 2018, the chamber got involved, there was an additional $300 fee. They said, "You're now part of the master plan." I paid the $300 fee. I have the full support of the chamber with this. Janet Kersey, who runs the event, fully supports what we're doing. She said, "Mr. Sweeney, you've already gone through this. You were approved by the chamber, the CBB and the City of Daytona Beach. This permit here is for Biketoberfest. We've already been approved."
So what happened?
The second go-round, that's what I'd like to know. That's what I'd like to know. Now we're talking about land development codes and all this other stuff. At my appeal, they said there's three things they were looking for. Fault of the applicant. Mr. Morris said, "There is no fault. It doesn't apply here. It's not the fault of the applicant." Gravity of the violation is the second thing. There was no violation. I've always conformed to every rule there is. I've been a good steward. And the third one is opportunity to remedy. That's why I'm here. And I'm hoping that I can remedy this before the event. And I was told by the assistant attorney that I should seek counsel. I was also told by other people, "Seek counsel." I don't want to sue the city. I want to get along with everybody. I mean, I'm here to get along with everybody. I've never had any issue, but this is just wrong.
Mr. Jagger, any thoughts?
I'm familiar with this case from a procedural standpoint. I know that your original application was denied, that you've been to the special magistrate, and your appeal was denied. I'd really have to defer to staff as to the factual elements and as to the reasons for the denial.
They told me the reasons for the denial at the last appeal was due to a jurisdictional question. They stated, and this is Mr. Morris and Mr. Jackson, that my appeal has no basis because I did not apply. That's wrong. I did apply. I applied 20 and 24 North Halifax. Jennifer Pipes at the chamber told me, after a phone call to Hannah Ward and Mr. Morris, that I had to take 20 North Halifax off. At first, I was denied on both. And then I went down and talked to Suzette downstairs, and she said, "No. You are within the boundary set forth of Main Street, Peninsula, Halifax, and Auditorium." Now there's confusion on, well, it's a vacant lot is allowed, but if it's not vacant. It makes no sense. And the thing is, we have fourteen years of people that they've seen my kids grow up. And my baby in 2005 and 2007. These people park with us all the time. We're ambassadors of the community here and trying to, you know, we're part of the solution here, not part of the problem.
Have the rules changed at all?
Yeah, let me say this. Yeah, and that's what I was about to say. We can't, we don't know what the ruling was from the magistrate. We would have to have that, but this is, we're not a court. But one of the things, I will say this, you're operating on a vacant, unimproved lot, right?
My main office is on 20 North Halifax. I'm a real estate appraiser. And then I have a contiguous lot at 24 North Halifax, which is allowed to park. You are allowing me to park there.
Well, we may be allowing you to park there, but one of the issues, and I don't know anything other than this, than what I'm about to state. The idea is thought that it does not help the redevelopment of the area when you allow people to benefit from Bike Week by allowing them to have this special exception. You discourage investment. You know, and I, so I don't know how you got to this point, but it's not really our role here tonight to answer that. But I would like staff to figure out a way to give us a clear understanding as to why we are where we are. Because you, Commissioner May was following up on your questions, and I think you deserve a right to have a clear understanding. And also, we should understand why, okay? So you guys can look at his, while he was, and follow up. Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Morris, you want to tell us something?
Sir, thank you.
Okay, your time's up.
One sec, go ahead.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
I don't need until noon tomorrow. I don't need until noon tomorrow.
Okay.
The reason is that the rule, as the mayor just referenced, permits you to use unimproved property for parking if you're within that zone that's defined in the Bike Week master plan maps. And the commission had directed us to be very stringent in how we applied and read the rules. And we did that. So there was 24 North Halifax, which is still outstanding. They have to file an appeal. This gentleman here did file an appeal. There was a hearing that lasted probably an hour and ten or twenty minutes before the magistrate. And magistrate ruled that the city had done the correct thing as the rules are applied to this gentleman's property, Mr. Sweeney. The improved property is meant for the purposes that the mayor just outlined. The unimproved property, which is adjacent and contiguous to his improved property, is permitted by the guidelines to be used. And he did state that he had an application that had both the improved and unimproved property. When he heard that the unimproved property could be used, but the improved could not, he did cancel the portion of the application pursuant to the improved property. So that was the jurisdictional question. But there was a factual hearing, too, as the rules applied. And Mr. DuKell, as a special magistrate, ruled that the city had correctly applied the rules to the situation at hand. From the perspective of the remedy that's available, if the commission cares to change its policy so that both the improved and unimproved property in that area that's defined on a map, and his property is in that area, I think 24 is as well, that can be done. But the commission's policy expressed in the rules is what we applied. It's what you directed we should do. And we did that. If it's an outcome that you don't like, certainly it can be changed very quickly. I think it's adopted by resolution. But that's a circumstance for the commission to consider, and that's just the circumstances of it. So that's why the ruling was what it was. And it was not as if it was a short hearing that the magistrate didn't look at every avenue that he could consider to determine whether or not he could apply the thing to Mr. Sweeney. And I think Mr. Sweeney did a reasonable job of quoting me in terms of the application of the rule. And I said to him, "Look," I said, "The rule is what it is. It's something that we've got to apply as it's written, and that's been the direction that we've been given by the commission." And that is what we did. And that is why I also appeared at the special magistrate hearing to explain the staff's position rather than have the appearance that the staff somehow was arbitrary or capricious in the application of the rules or following the direction of the commission. The commission sets the policy. Whatever your policy may be, I assure you, staff will follow it.
May I ask a question? Was the intent of the policy to help, to help the beachside area start to improve and maintain a particular lock during the Bike Week events? Is that the intent?
I didn't write, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk to you. I didn't write the policy or have anything to do with its drafting. But when you look at the overall history of Bike Week, I think the mayor properly summarized what the intention was. Plus, you have a sort of overflow of things that happened from Main Street during Bike Week. It just, things just sort of spread out. You've got the same situation up on A1A with some of the shops and stuff that are north and south of A1A or south of Main. And so the language is very little, and it is an exception to the rule. When you have an exception, the requirement is that you strictly interpret the language and apply it to be that. It's not as if it's meant to be loose. It's meant to be very narrow in how it's written, and that's what the language is. It's easy enough to change it. It could be done, really, in a minute.
How many businesses were affected besides his?
One more that I'm aware of.
Two.
Yes, ma'am.
Number one, he's been doing it for many years. Number two, they need plenty of parking around Main Street on Bike Week. Number three, can I make a motion that we allow him?
I can't answer that question, and I'm not arguing the policy question one way or another. I think that's something the commission has to consider and direct the staff, what it thinks the policy is.
And we're not, we're not in a formal meeting at this time. And, you know, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I'm opposed to changing this. We have to begin to hold the line if we have a certain set of standards. That we've deemed these standards as helping to encourage investment in this area. And that's what, this is the reason that we did this. This is the reason that we set the standard. And I'm sorry that this has an adverse impact on a person that's been operating in this way for this long, but the reality is that we're trying to establish a procedure that encourages people to invest and does not allow them to take advantage of a rule that is an exception. It's not a normal thing. So, but I'm not, if you guys want to come back at the next meeting and re, well, we see, you know, you're speaking out of turn, so I'm not going to address what you said. Otherwise, I would. But if you guys, if it is a pleasure of you all's and you want to return at the next meeting and do that, so be it. But we did, we set this standard. We told staff to do this.
Our next meeting will be the sixth.
Yes.
Can we put it on the agenda, please?
Well, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to address it, but if someone else wants it on the agenda, they can. They have to give me a second person.
Mr. Manager, can we put that on the agenda to address this question?
If there's a second person that wants it, is what I'm saying.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Thank you. May I say something? May I please speak? So a lot of things happened before I was on commission, right? But I think it's fair that we give you the opportunity to state your case, and then at that moment, take a vote. Pleasure.
Give him an opportunity to state his case.
In terms of, in terms of share the information, share the information and have a position right there.
Okay, sure. Any other?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is, I believe it's Laquisha Pollard, and on deck is Dyrrell Johnson.
Hello, my name is Laquisha Pollard. I'm coming. I'm over the due day event. My brother lost his life in front of my grandma's house on 211 Garden Street. And my cousin, Cordray Wiley, lost his life on Second Avenue. We from that neighborhood. So I came up with a bikes up, guns down party. I tried to get a permit. They take five and a, five and a half weeks, forty-five days, they told me. So I was going back and forth trying to get a, I want to know how you getting information when somebody not giving you information? Where to get liability insurance and every kind of insurance you need? I wanted to make sure the whole city, everybody who was coming up to do bikes up, guns down. It's just not the name of do, do they bikes up or guns down. It's really about something, trying to get kids, different kids to understand to put the guns down, because that's where it's happening at in our neighborhood. All, mostly all the shooting and all the going on happened where I stay, over there on 211 Garden Street and off Second Avenue. So I was trying to get a permit. When I was trying to get the permit, I was getting ran around, and they telling me I got to have different stuff. I asked them where to get different stuff. They say they couldn't tell me, because that's just like them telling me, like referring me to somebody else, and it's somebody else that sell insurance. So I ain't know where to go or where to go, so the time ran out. They said, "You can't have it on Second Avenue. You can have it at your resident, where you don't have to have a permit." So I had it on my resident. Now, it's a problem what happened on my resident. It was nine hundred, nine hundred and something people, nothing happening. Nothing happened. Nobody got killed. Nobody shot. Nobody fought. I just need information to do it better, to make sure everybody be safe, and we be able to do that. That's why peaceful day is peaceful in the hood. And where we from, in that neighborhood, it's peaceful there on due day. I know you can't tell people what to do, but it seems like the people listen when it's due day or dre day, and nothing don't go on, and everything be okay. I just need information to see if I can go the right way. And I tried to get somebody to come talk on behalf of the kids, to let the kids know to put the guns down, too. If nobody ain't telling them, why they go do it? If you got somebody speaking for them, even you, Mayor, I should have came to you, because you could have talked to them, too. But we need somebody in our neighborhood talking to the kids or somebody giving me information where to go. They telling me you can rent a park, but only a hundred and fifty people come. It's a bikes up, guns down. A lot of people want to hear that.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Dyrrell Johnson, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson. And sir, you can give that to the clerk.
Good evening, everybody. How y'all doing? Good evening, good evening. My name is Rel Black, and I'm the founder of Community Healing Project. Over the past two and a half years, I've done outreach with my organization. I've worked with a lot of you personally, so I thank y'all for this opportunity. There's a lot of issues that have been presented this week and this year in our community. I don't want to present an issue. I want to present a solution. Last year, we held our first annual Malcolm X Day Community Bash hearing in Daytona Beach. It was about anti-gun violence, economic empowerment, health awareness, and a way for children to learn about culture diversity. We had support from a bunch of commissioners, even our mayor. This year, we're asking for a little more than that. We want a physical donation of the commissioner board to come on out May 18th to be a part of a forum discussion, moving our community forward by any means necessary. Just a thirty-minute panel discussion, speaking on events in the community, issues in the community, and ways we can move it forward, bridging the gap. There's a bunch of gaps in our community generational-wise, race-wise, wealth-wise, and there's a lot of answers that are not being, you know, not being solved right now. There are a lot of people in this room concerned about our community. I'm one of them. All of you are one of them. That's why y'all on this board. And now, on the paper I just submitted, I have copies for each one of you, but I know that it doesn't work that way. But we have a monetary donation as well as an in-kind donation. If the monetary donation is not available for, you know, for us to have this year with a tax deductible donation, we're asking for an in-kind service of Daisy Stocking Park. May 18th, from 12 to eight o'clock. Attached to the document, I have our permit from last year with all our fees, everything we had to pay. And we want to know if it's possible for this year. If we can't have the monetary donation, is that way we can get the venue donated through an in-kind donation for eight hours? This event is necessary for us, because like Ms. Quay said, we don't have too much peace in our community. Those times that we do, we need to celebrate them. Violence is never the answer. We got to understand that. There are children in our community who not going to get to grow up to be superstars, to be leaders, to be politicians like you all. So it's time to make that change, time to make that difference right now. You all have an opportunity to move our community forward by supporting this event. It'll be our second annual one, and I hope you all get to take that document home and actually read it and actually get to study and see what we're about, this organization. Everybody in this room knows the work that goes on in this community outside of these meetings, and it's time for us to bridge those gaps. I'm not a politician. I'm an activist. You all are politicians, so it's our time to bridge that gap and make it work. Let's move our community forward, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Jermaine Stanley.
Well, as Mr. Black goes to his seat, Mr. Black, May 18th at Daisy Stocking Park is already taken. I secured that park myself.
Seafood Festival.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. First and foremost, I'm concerned about accountability and transparency of this commission, and we're not getting that. We're not able to meet with our commissioners, the mayor, or the city manager, and that is terrible. I'm also concerned that it took you two years, one month, and twenty days to get the evaluation of the city manager done. This proves that you need to be about the people's work, and you're not doing that. So if it's going to take that long, the last time it took quite a while, and you took credit for that, Mayor, and this time it was even worse. I would like to say to all of you here that you, I read in the paper where he's making over $200,000. And that kind of money, we need some accountability, and we definitely need transparency. Also, I'm concerned that I went to Cracker Barrel to get something to eat Saturday and Sunday, and I was not able to make any turns after I left Clyde Morris Boulevard. Those streets were all blocked off, and I could not turn left or right. I wanted to go inside of a business to see about getting some eyeglasses. I couldn't even get in the glitters. I turned around, came all the way back to the mall, and it still was blocked off, and I couldn't get over there. I am happy that the Speedway is making money. I've been at my house on International Speedway forty-nine years, and in those forty-nine years, we never had this happen before, where those streets was blocked off, and I was not able to go and patronize the business that I wanted to patronize. So I want them to continue to make money, but you need to take care of the taxpayer and residents who's paying the bills here. And I am a homeowner of forty-nine years, and I pay my taxes every year. I want to have access to these businesses. Also, I'd like to say that I would like for you all to pay Martin Luther King. I've been at this podium many times and telling you to do your job. I would like you to get out and pave it from Orange Avenue back to International Speedway. It's all cracked up there in front of Pains, and also before you get to Checkers. Also, I'd like you to get and pave in front of Dave, but don't come to college. That's also cracked up, and it needs to be paved. Thank you. Let's make it happen. Let's do your work.
Our next speaker is Jermaine Stanley, and I believe it's Tersha Charles.
Good evening. How y'all doing? How you doing? My name is Jermaine Stanley, 928 Loomis. I've been in the community, I've been here in Daytona for like the last ten years now. I've been doing a lot of work in the community, far as with the kids, the homeless, backpack drives with Pepsi, the city itself. I haven't had a chance to work with any of the commissioners, but I definitely look forward to it. My issue that I have today is basically like, when it comes to renting the facilities. Just to piggyback off what they said, I tried to have two events for the kids like twice in the last two years, and I had to cancel both of them because the pricing for the facility were too high. And I have the nonprofit, so that's basically my issue. I just want it to be more accessible to us, because like I said, there's so many events I want to do but can't do because the city's not allowing me to do. So, yeah, that's all I have to say, really. Appreciate you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is it Tersha Charles? Terrica, I'm sorry. And on deck is Sharice Dooley.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners, how y'all doing?
Hey, Terr-
My name is Terrica Charles, address is three thirty-eight North Caroline Street, and I'm the founder of One Bad Decision. It's a youth mentoring organization. Um, uh, Commissioner Henry and Reed kind of touched on what I talked, uh, what I want to discuss about the youth activities in the community. And them not being affordable and accessible to the very children that live in these communities. There are nonprofit organizations out here who are working hard with these kids. So what I would like to know is where can we get some support from the city? Since we are picking up the slack, in, in so many words, for where these people are not able to afford the things that they need to do at the prices that you all have set. Um, another issue that I wanted to, uh, discuss was, uh, pretty much bridging the gap between the community and city government. A lot of it is that the community does not understand the roles that each one of you play. So there are times that they might feel like you don't care, but it's just because the particular issue is not being addressed to the right people. So I would like to, uh, propose some type of committee or something that would bridge that gap between the community and the, um, city commissioners and city government, police department, so that we can maintain a positive relationship between the city. Because between the city and the community, we can't function without you guys and you can't function without us. So those are just the two things I wanted to touch on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharice Dooley and on deck is Jakara Lewis.
I'm Sharice Doiley, three oh four North Keith Street. Um, I'm coming here representing myself. I am a local, um, activist and, uh, community member. I also work with One Bad Decision, Community Healing Project, and various, um, community organizations to put on events for children in the community. Um, what I wanted to propose is allocation of funds for, um, the advancement and, um, establishment of minority-owned businesses, specifically black-owned businesses. Um, and have this be able to directly affect our children. So, um, an idea that I was thinking about, or we were thinking about, is doing like a youth entrepreneurship seminar or, um, summer program, something along those lines, so that we can give the children something to do during the summertime, so that they're not out running the streets and getting in trouble. So like a lot of people said, we have a lot of crime in our community, and especially during the summertime, these children do not have anything to do. So I think a lot of you, um, are aware of the health disparities in the three two one one four area. I personally am aware because I served on the Health Equity Implementation Team at the Volusia County Health Department. So I've seen the statistics, I understand, you know, the, the disparities in our community. And we need programs, we need funding to be able to give our people, um, financial stability. I don't think that we are in this predicament because we want to be in it, we want to find a way out, we want to find a way to, to, um, get ourselves out of poverty, we want to find a way to get our children off the streets. So we need help from the city to be able to, um, return black businesses into our community or fund them so that they can give, um, internship opportunities for our children in the summertime so that they can have something positive to do and make money and stay off the streets. Thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you very soon.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jakara Lewis and on deck is Erica Sip.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jakara Lewis and my address is eight oh seven Mary McCallabathune Boulevard. First, I would like to clarify who my zone commissioner is, is that you, Ms. Reed?
Zone six?
Zone six, okay. So, um, just to piggyback off what everybody else said, I would like for you guys to move forward in building stronger relationships with a particular group of members of the community. I noticed that you guys tend to focus on children and the older residents, but the people in my age group tend to get overlooked. And we don't have a strong or steady relationship with any of you guys. MMB is horrible. If Mary McCallabathune was alive, she would roll over in her grave. It's a shame that I have to come to my business every day and it looks like that. It is, people should be accountable. And just to piggyback off what you said, I really don't like the idea that a business is being introduced as a reason for it to be better. There are people who live there, there are kids who walk those streets every day, a lot of you guys grew up in that area. And I think that you guys need to work a lot harder or push for the city manager to make changes quicker and faster. Um, another issue that I have is events within our community. Um, if you guys are not aware, Due Day is a really big event, and it does promote peace. Um, the problem in our community is that a small percentage of the people who participate are used to characterize the entire event. So there are some people who do do things that they're not supposed to do, but everybody does not do that. When I came to my business Sunday night, I felt like I was in Ferguson. There were police officers at every single corner, every single side street was blocked off, and I did not like how I felt in a place where I pay rent. My customers could not get to me, they had to park streets over just to walk to get somewhere where I was, and people were outside just chilling, trying to memorialize somebody who lost his life to something senseless. So I think that a bridge should be built between all of us to help promote that event. We don't want to work in conjunction with you guys, but we, we would like for you guys to help to facilitate the process. Um, this is something that a family decided to create for their loved ones that they lost, and we would like a lot more support. I don't like the fact that people say that they don't know or they weren't aware when everybody, like, that's the hood. Like, a lot of y'all come from the same places, and some of you guys don't come from where we come from, and we don't have a voice. And I don't like that. I don't feel good about that because I feel like myself or Rel may be one of the people who may be sitting in one of these chairs one day. I don't want to be the person who left and didn't give back, but it's really hard to stay sometimes when it feels like you're fighting and you're not progressive. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Erica Sip and on deck is Johnny Moore.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Erica Sip, I reside at one sixty-seven Center Street. Um, first, I want to thank you guys for your support, Commissioner Henry and Mayor Henry. You came through strong for us and we really appreciate that. I do want to talk about the fees. Um, it is, it is not in the literature on the cost. The cost for us to hold this event, and I'll tell you, it was six hundred and twenty-five dollars. That was just for YSG by itself. I still had to come out a hundred and sixty dollars for my own insurance. That's fine, it's not a problem with us because Re- Race, which stands for Resource Advocacy for Community Engagement, we work with other organizations and other businesses. And what we do, we collaborate. We, we, we would prefer not to deal with you because we know, and don't get me wrong when I say this, because it is a struggle, it is a fight. My, my, I got, I've been doing, I've been trying to get this event since September. And that's how long it takes for the permits, for the police, for this, that, and the other. And the reason it got done so fast this year is because I stayed the task. I stayed the task. And I know that that is the only way it will get done. Unfortunately, that is the only way it will get done. But if we put ourselves at motions, it can get done. So with that, I'm saying we do, you guys do need to look at the pricing for these events. You're going to see me a lot. I'm not afraid of your prices. My team is not afraid of your prices. We'll pay it. If we have to pay a thousand dollars for these children to have something, that is what we are going to do. We are go-getters. We are planning this event, we hope that you come out, we have an educational workshop, it's for three hours. We're going to educate our children on ethics, on how to behave. We have great gifts for them, we have two DJs. I was blessed to get the whole facility. So I have the multipurpose room, it does cost twenty-five dollars extra. I have the courtyard, it does cost twenty-five dollars extra. And I have the gymnasium. But it was for our vision to happen and for it to manifest, we knew what we had to do, and we wasn't going to let anything stop us. We educated ourselves. Sometimes you can't get that from someone, you have to learn how to do it yourself. Google is a wonderful gift. Sometimes you just have to stop and ask somebody, what is the process? If they don't give you the answer, find the next person. But it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Johnny Moore and on deck is Jenny Nazak. Is Mr. Moore still here? Okay, our next speaker is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners and fellow citizens. That was just a very, has been a very intense, wonderful meeting, and I want to thank all of you for bringing up these real important issues in the community. Um, I do want to affirm Rel Black and the other community leaders that are trying to move the community forward and help the kids. I also want to speak a bit about Main Street, I live right near Main Street, and I know that we're, we've been trying to get businesses to stay open year-round and not just take from the community for two weeks and then shut down. And I really want to affirm you guys for supporting that, thank you so much. The issue that I was wanting to bring up tonight seems so alien compared with all the content we've been discussing, but it is pretty important. It's about nature, it's about the relationship between humans and, and urban nature. Uh, one thing I've been noticing is we're really over pruning our palm trees. And there are reasons why the palm trees get pruned for, for pedestrian areas and public safety and so on. But they're getting so pruned that it looks like a stick with a feather on top in some cases. It's like we're desecrating our, our local symbol. And when you stand under a palm tree and it's that, that sphere, that natural, you can hear it rustle, there's a whole thing, and it casts a lot of shade, and it offers habitat for pollinators. I know this is, this is probably hilarious in relation to all the other content, but, but it's important. You know, they really, they provide services, and they're a beautiful symbol. It's for the tourists and for the locals. I've been communicating with various departments about how to meet the human needs while also allowing the palm trees to have more of their natural shape, and I'll continue to do so. I also want to praise the city. There is going to be an event on Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, an educational event to teach the public about snakes. Our local residents, they're local residents too, and we're going to learn about snakes. And that's going to be at the Breakers Park Environmental Learning Center, February twenty-seventh at eleven o'clock. I actually found that on the city website, thank you guys very much. Tomorrow, Thursday, down in New Smyrna Beach, there's going to be an educational event about the Florida, what is it? Uh, Florida, some kind of fish, uh, Florida sawfish, never heard of it until today. Um, it's going to be, they're going to teach people what that is, and it's endangered, we'll bring it back. Thank you all, have a good evening.
Jenny, my father was a, he raised me as a, he was a palm tree man who pruned palm trees for a living.
I know.
And if he didn't prune those palm trees, I probably wouldn't have gone to college. Because I did not want to do his work. That was so funny to me.
Our next speaker is Janet Wiley and on deck is Jim Schultz.
My name is Janet Wiley, four twenty-nine North Caroline Street. We need time, ladies, I have to go home and see about my husband and my children. But I came today. Um, first of all, I believe in, in all you're getting, you need to get an understanding. And I was reading Facebook with what was going on in Due Day, and I decided to pull up to the meeting so I can say what I had to say. First of all, you all have a position. So no matter how hard somebody comes at you on Facebook, you maintain who you are. And not let them make you lose who you are, because then you begin to look different at the community, and then you definitely lose the respect. Second of all, like she said, the young lady who left spoke about her brother. You may not have known there, but this is what we want you to do, communicate with us. We are the people. We are the people that vote and get you where you are. So you need to communicate, you need to know what's going on in your city. One way is Facebook. I didn't know until I looked on there, and as I investigated, I knew everything that was going on. I went to Due Day to pray before it started. She asked me to come thirty minutes to pray before it started. So I want you to know that this is a rally of peace. So now that you are aware, I just ask you to be involved. If your daughter or your child was walking and didn't know what direction to go, you would want somebody to point them in the right direction. That's all this young lady wanted. And then, I saw police on every single block from North Street, is it? No, Dunn, almost to International. Police, police, police. How much money did that take? You know what you did, and I appreciate it. You secured a big block party for free. Or at least they didn't have to pay you for it. That's what you did. And then when I got ready to go where I had to go, it took me almost an hour to get from mainland past, um, um, I'm sorry, the Big Bass Place. That's where you needed all your police to help this traffic flow like it should be flowing. We're not your enemies, and I know you're not our enemy. But we need to come together so that can be an understanding. And all you're getting, get an understanding. We're not enemies, and you're not our enemy.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Schultz and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
Jim Schultz, one one seven Harvard Drive. I've been a little bit surprised tonight, a few more people than usual are speaking. And I found it very interesting. I think it's the epitome of what the United States is all about, free speech. It's a damn good thing that it's happening. And, uh, you know, it is the First Amendment, it's sort of the foundation of it. One thing I'm surprised though is that this isn't really a formal meeting. I would think it would deserve a little higher status. Maybe not, that's your choice. What I really came to speak about was free speech, yes. Uh, but one of the top ten threats, uh, in, well, in two thousand nineteen, according to World Health Organization, is vaccine hesitancy. Okay, let's tie free speech to that. In other words, they are looking for ways not to allow free speech of people that actually seem to be quite studied. Right now, Adam Schiff sent a letter to Mark Zuckerberg. Could be, he's very influential in what every American, oh, Google! Yeah, I think several people have mentioned you can find out anything in Google. Well, Schiff is asking to remove unpopular speech. Hey, the only speech you need to protect is unpopular speech. Popular speech is always welcomed. And the First Amendment wasn't about popular speech, it was protecting those things you ears wanted to protect yourself from. So hey, it's about time. And the reality is, that's a very risky road to go down. It sets up a whole thing, uh, scenario. Do we really want Google to be in charge of censoring what they don't think is proper? Well, guess what? They know more about you than you know. Because they know your actions and they remember it a lot better. So the reality is, there's a whole lot of stuff going on out there, and you won't get to know about it if free speech doesn't exist. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd and on deck is Ann Ruby. Is Ms. Hurd, oh, there she is.
Good evening. Patricia Hurd, eight twenty-two Burnham Street, Daytona Beach, Florida, zip code three two one one four. I have a dream. I have a dream that one day I would be able to drive down Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard without swinging to the left or swinging to the right, to avoid the potholes in the road or cars parked illegally on yellow lines. I have a dream that every street named in his honor should be respected. It should represent him, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. He helped the garbage men, he helped the garbage workers in Tennessee. And his life was taken. We're not sure exactly how it was taken, but it was taken during that time. So we are here asking you to help us in our community, in our city. Yes, Zone three two one one four. I lived there, I have lived in three two one one seven. And I want to say, in my little time, let's clean up, pave the streets, empty lots. I want you all to go down on MLK and Cedar Street and see what is being done there. I want you all to go down on MLK and see the street and see what is being done there. Rocky chairs, Mayor, chairs. John Birch was there the other day and paper and everything else, and it looks ridiculous. But we're saying that Dr. Martin Luther King is a person that we should respect, and I want to be able to say this is a street that we are respecting in this city. Lee Park, I talked to the, uh, chief about that. Oh, parking in yards. Code enforcement, all of these cars parked, five cars parked on, uh, dirt. Think our 32114 will look, or should look?
Your time's up, Ms. Hurd.
Yes, sir, but you got the point, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ann Ruby and on deck is Pear Louis.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. Um, first thing tonight is I wanna say thank you to Scott Lee of Code Enforcement. Before he took over, things were, were not functioning well, and now they are under his leadership. He's responsive, so if you have a problem with parked cars, please call him and he'll get somebody out there to deal with it. He's doing a great job and he's got a big backlog of work to do because it hasn't been done well in the past. So, thank you to Scott Lee, he's doing an excellent job. To speak to that also, I appreciate that you're enforcing the master plan. I understand it's difficult for, for Mr. Sweeney that he's not gonna be allowed to park cars on that property that had, that the improved property, and he always has, but that was the rule. And it's in, if Main Street's gonna improve, then we need to enforce the Bike Week regulations as they're written. Now, overhauling them would also be a good idea, but that's not for today. Um, when you're considering small housing development, I wish that you would consider not just putting smaller houses on smaller lots, consider keeping a bigger lot but allowing s- uh, several small houses to form a condo, condo association. I mean, and if you're dealing with an association, okay. Extending the CRA to cover the cost of, uh, running that riverfront park, I can't support that because our CRAs have been abysmal in terms of producing results. So, unless you're gonna do a deep dive overhaul of how our CRAs are functioning, it's just irresponsible to extend them another 30 years. Uh, they really need, that really needs looking at. When you get to the managers' evaluations, you all had specific requests of behavior you'd like to see changed, improvements that you'd like to see. Instead of just listing those, how about you set up an evaluation that says, I wanna see a marked improvement? I can't think of any job I've ever had with such a vague evaluation procedure. So, I really wish that you would set the metrics and then hold him to them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pear Louis and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
How are you? Pear Louis, 130 South Franklin Street. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, to the Commissioners and to the city of Daytona Beach. I, uh, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I just wanna talk about really just, well, two things really were on my mind. I attended the Chamber of Commerce's Eggs and Issues at OPGA, and, uh, it was a spectacular meeting. I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed hearing the comments that Jim made there that talked about the numerous improvements that are going on in the area, talking about, uh, real estate development, construction permits, housing permits. He listed a litany of items, of economic indicators that were going on in the area. And then what was interesting was, and I was clapping with everybody else, but towards the end, I cornered Jim and we were having a conversation, and I said, what's interesting, Jim, is I didn't hear you mention Midtown at all. Not one time. And, um, and, and this isn't against Jim, but it was just a very honest comment. And he said, well, this is the redevelopment that's happening around the city for the next, I'm probably off, but I thought he said, three to five years. So, I said, well, what's going on in the Midtown? And he said, absolutely nothing. Zero. Zero. Nothing is going on. And it was an honest answer, but obviously as a person that, I'm your Midtown Board Chair, it takes me a bat. So, I thought to myself, how can we have zero going on for the next five years that's going on in the Midtown area? What is it that we're not doing or gaining when it comes to economic development, when it comes to increasing the tax base and stuff like that's in our area? And I had a couple minutes, so I'll make this real fast. Then the other, then just the other day, I saw in the paper, they talked about the proposed eyeing of the downtown area, the Project Delta. I know it's not your fault or stuff like that, but I read the article. And as I read, and this isn't a us against them because I'm, I'm glad to see it, I hope it does go through in Georgia, but I looked at and I saw one of the things in there about a grocery store that was in there. And I talked about storefront, and I thought to myself, didn't somebody come to the Midtown Board quite a couple of years ago and talked about eyeing a grocery store in the Midtown area? Didn't the Heat talk about this? Didn't we address this issue five years ago, 10 years ago? Having people constantly come talking about the development that needs to be done in MLK, the support of our Commissioner that is hammered at home over and over. So, in 10 seconds or less, what I'm saying is, where is the development that's supposed to go in the Midtown area? And if it is, what are those things? If they say that in our areas we can't support a grocery store... I'm out. We're supporting the convenience stores and they're 10, 20% more. I'll, I'll be quiet because I know my time is up.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Doyle Lewis.
Good evening, Commission. Here I am again, Doyle Lewis. Wasting my time. I got seven things I wanna speak on. One of them is homeless parking for cars, autos, and bicycles. We need more places to lock down bicycles. This is becoming a walking and a bicycle city. When you expand anywhere, you need more bicycle areas to lock down bicycles. People are doing this a lot, especially up and down A1A because that's where I'm actually at most of the time, it's easier to hide. The painkiller crisis, that's been going on for years. 2008, 2009, 2010. Surgeon General's first thing when he went into office in 2010 was to try to clean up that mess. That needs a lot of looking into, and we need to keep the fire burning on that to keep that down to size. They're just waiting for you to lighten up on that. The ones that are hooked on it are just waiting to come back, they're not far away. Stay on top of that. Public comment at the end of the meeting, someone said once before in this room that public comment should be quieted in this room because of election years. I've been speaking on this for years. I speak now on a regular basis, day by day, all the time, and it has nothing to do with the elections. People should be able to hear and see the public comments. Period. That is actually against the law because they take your time out to come up here to speak to you and nobody else knows about it. And the right to work state, I've been here a long time, haven't had a job, that's kind of a joke. The right to work state, it's a state of mind. I work every day, I'm homeless for nine years. Happy Valentine's Day. Related.
Thank you, Daytona Beach. Good night.